Okay, welcome to the May 22nd, 2024, meeting of the Edina Planning Commission. The city is committed to continuing to receive and hear your input on matters. We have been collecting public input through voicemail at our engagement website, BetterTogetherEdina.org. It is important you know that all comments have been submitted, have been received and read prior to the start of this meeting. You do not need to submit the same feedback in another way. All feedback is considered equally, regardless of the way in which it was submitted. Tonight, there are two public hearings. Individuals who want to provide testimony remotely for the public hearings can call 312-535-8110 and enter access code 2631-711-5389. The password is 5454. Press *3 on your telephone keypad when you would like to get in the queue to speak. A staff member will unmute you when it is your turn. Please state your full name and address before speaking, and everyone is allowed up to three minutes to speak. Remember, you do not need to call in or comment live tonight, you have already provided feedback. Also, do not repeat information already presented. Provide testimony if you have new comments or information to bring forward. Okay? Call to order? Roll call?
Commissioner Alkire.
Here.
Commissioner Padilla.
Here.
Commissioner Hu.
Here.
Commissioner Schultz.
Here.
Commissioner Day.
Here.
Commissioner Velt.
Here.
Commissioner Honeman.
Here.
Vice Chair Miranda.
Here.
Okay, our first item, or next item, is the approval of the meeting agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Next item is approval of meeting minutes. The meeting minutes were for the April 11th, 2024 special work session and the May 8th regular meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the meeting minutes.
A second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Approval of the meeting minutes, uh, meeting minutes are approved. Next up is community comment. We will now hear from residents in person who would like to speak about something not on tonight's agenda or scheduled for a future public hearing. You may speak for up to three minutes. After giving your full name and address, the green light at your podium will turn on. When you have 30 seconds remaining, the yellow light will turn on, and when you're out of time, the red light will turn on. Anyone here in person for a... Come forward?
My name is David Frankel, 4510 Lakeview Drive, Edina. A couple of comments about planning and zoning. I moved here from Reston, Virginia, which is generally considered to be the first planned community in the United States. It is roughly the same demographics as Edina. And to be honest, when I moved here about 14 years ago, a shock to how Edina virtually does no zoning or planning. It was amazing to me compared to Reston, which I said is planned, along with Columbia, Maryland, which was a sister community about the same time. The other issue I'd like to bring up is the city of Edina, as you're probably well aware of, belongs to the National League of Cities. Edina sends pretty big contingencies of staff and elected officials to these meetings every year. The National League of Cities has a website you can look up, and it encourages cities to use data and evidence in decision-making. When I go through all the various decision-making that's done in this city, in this building, I see very little data being used, very little evidence. It's a lot of "we need it, we want it, let's do it." It's not a way to run any organization. I listened to a presentation by the head of New York State Procurement. This whole conversation was about data analytics, how we use data to make decisions. And what are we doing here in Edina? We have no data person. We don't have any data analytics. We don't use data enough in our decision-making. The other thing is tax increment financing. There's absolutely no reason the city of Edina should be using TIF. It's had an impact on the Edina Public Schools, who are now running a deficit. The HRA really should have a person from the school board on the HRA group, which is perfectly legal. It's done in Grand Forks, North Dakota, which is the home city of our mayor, Hovland. Why it's not being done in Edina is beyond me, but that's beyond the scope of this. But the TIF, we have three basically dead TIF districts in Edina, and a fourth that's struggling. One that's close to the City Hall, Grand View, which has been empty for 15 years because of TIF. And TIF money was used to make a bridge that's right now under federal investigation for not being ADA compliant. Again, data, evidence, was this going to be ADA compliant when it was built? I asked for a rendering. Before it was built, I never received it through a legal data request. The city's got to wake up and use planning and zoning the correct way. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else here make a comment? No? Okay, um, we'll move on then to, uh, we have two public hearings tonight. The first one is about a front yard setback variance for 4619 Town Circle.
Chair, members of the Planning Commission, this is a request for a 15.7-foot front yard setback variance at 4619 Town Circle. The subject property is located south of Town Circle, and the easterly lot line kind of wraps into a cul-de-sac. The property is approximately 18,604 square feet in area, and the existing structure is a two-story home built in 1939 with an attached undersized garage. The garage loads off of sort of that eastern portion of the lot, which is backing up to the cul-de-sac. This is a survey, a recent survey of the property, and it also includes the proposed addition that is requesting a variance. The house fronts or faces north along Town Circle with the existing garage loading off of the cul-de-sac. Because this is an undersized two-car garage, they would like to add on a garage that would accommodate the vehicles that they have, as well as storage. They will also be putting some living space above. It is attached to the house, so it is in addition to the single dwelling unit. There will be a breezeway out to the garage area. What you will notice is that this line is indicating the required front yard setback. The front yard setback is determined by the average of the front yard of the home on either side, so you have a front yard setback to the west that is much closer, and then the setback that is to the east is much further back, so that results in an average front yard setback of approximately 35.7 feet. And the existing home is at roughly 21, a little over 21 feet to the front lot line, so you can see that, you know, there's a large portion of the house that is currently non-conforming. They would like to add that garage so that it, again, loads off of the cul-de-sac. Unfortunately, the angle of that front yard setback cuts deeply into the lot, limiting opportunity to locate a garage. Also, there is a significant difference in grade from the front of the lot to the back. It starts, it's relatively flat in the front yard, but then as you get in the backyard, it slopes up significantly. The difference in grade from Town Circle to the back lot line is anywhere from 28 to 30 feet. So this is the compliance table based on the existing and proposed conditions. It meets all of the requirements with the exception of the city standard, which is the average of the homes on either side for front yard setback. The current or existing front yard setback of the home is 21.7 feet. It would be reduced to 20 feet to allow for that garage addition. They actually had, um, proposed a closer garage to the cul-de-sac. It was recommended by staff that they back it up to at least the minimum side street setback that would be required for a typical corner lot, which is 20 feet. It is still short of their existing non-conforming setback. So this is a partial of the existing main level. It shows the existing garage. There's no dimensions on it, but it is, it is a tight two-car garage. This would be the addition. They would convert that existing garage into a family room. They would extend a mudroom and a breezeway to accommodate that new garage that would allow for the storage of both cars. And then they would also have a room above, which would be an amusement room. This would be the north elevation, the elevation that would be facing the cul-de-sac. And then the side elevations, what you'll notice is that there is a significant grade difference between the front of the garage and the back of the garage. It's about 11 and a half feet difference. So then, this is actually a view if you were looking at the inside wall towards the house or towards the patio that's behind the house, and you can see that there's this retaining wall, um, holding up the back, um, yard that is currently much higher as you go further back into the backyard. And here's a view of the back of that amusement room that's above the garage, so you can see that there, there's a significant difference in grade from front to back. This is that backyard area. You can see the retaining wall that's holding up that back, um, area behind the existing patio that's there, and then the garage would be located within this area. So here are some different views of that addition. It's meant to be matching to the house and in character. This is that back view of the amusement room that's above the garage. The grade is really at the level of where you would walk out. And then this is a view from, the patio is a little below there, that steps down, shows the retaining wall that is behind the patio that's currently behind the house. And some more views of project along the cul-de-sac and then the front of the house. So, um, is it reasonable for the request? And are there practical difficulties that are associated with the property? The proposed use is permitted in the R1 Single Dwelling Unit District, complies with all the zoning ordinance requirements with the exception of the setback of the new garage to the lot line along the cul-de-sac. The topography along the back wall of the structure, the south part, combined with the larger setback requirements or average of the abutting structures at the cul-de-sac, presents a practical difficulty. The neighbor to the west is setback 21.8 feet, which is basically aligned with the front of the, of the subject house, but the east property is setback 49.6 feet, requiring that average setback of over 35 feet. That is severely impacting opportunity on the lot to add on. They are requesting a 20-foot setback, which is the minimum setback for the, a garage on a typical side street. It would correct extraordinary circumstances. The proposed addition is reasonable due to the existing home's non-conforming front yard setback and the topography of the lot. The home will be remodeled and modified with the existing proposed setbacks consistent with the typical corner lot with that 20-foot setback from the side street to the garage opening. The property slopes up again about 28 to 30 feet from the front or where the street is all the way to the back lot line. And there are circumstances that are unique to the property and not common to similarly zoned property. The existing house has a non-conforming setback and was built prior to the current ordinance requirements. There have been no variances granted for the original construction of the home, so it conformed at the time in 1938 when it was built. The proposed additions will conform to all other zoning standards. And the topography in the rear yard again pushes the usable yard north or northwest away from the cul-de-sac. It had, had it been a typical side yard again, this wouldn't be an issue. The average setback helps to negate a proposed structure from encroaching on an abutting neighbor's front yard. In this case, the neighbor to the west would be minimally impacted, if at all, as the structure is offset from the proposed addition and there is landscaping, excuse me, a distance between the two. Will the variance alter the essential character? Granting the variances will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The additions will match the existing home setback and the typical setbacks along side street. All other aspects of the home will conform to the requirements in the garages of similar design to the existing house. Staff does recommend approval, um, all the, um... Would recommend approval based on, um, the subject to the following conditions. The survey and plans date stamp May 3rd, 2024. Compliance with the conditions and comments listed in the environmental engineer's memo and compliance with the tree ordinance. With that, I will say that there were quite a few comments that came in from Better Together Edina. There were some phone messages. All of them were positive and from neighbors within the neighborhood, and both adjacent neighbors also supported the request. And then we do have the contractor, um, for the property that is here to represent the homeowners. With that, I will stop and answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you very much. Great presentation. Do any commission members have questions? Here, David.
Thanks for the presentation. Can you just spend a minute on the, you mentioned the corner lot setbacks, and the staff report mentioned some things about side street versus front street. Does this really qualify for either a side street or a corner lot?
It does not, but in terms of looking at it as, um, if it were a corner lot, just because there is that home that is located at the end of the cul-de-sac, it's very far back. If it were a typical side street, if there were no home there, it would be a 20-foot setback.
Okay, so it's a point of reference for something similar but not the same?
Correct.
Okay.
Very similar but not the same.
Thank you. Any other questions? Does, does the, um, homeowner or architect want to stage anything or... Okay, um, so we have public hearing first and then questions? Yeah. We will now hear, excuse me, from residents who would like to provide testimony. Oh, I guess I need to open the public hearing. Opening a public hearing? Do you need a motion for that? No, okay. All right. We will now hear from residents who would like to provide testimony. Individuals who want to provide input remotely for the public hearings can call 312-535-8110 and enter access code 2631-711-5389. The password is 5454. Press *3 on your telephone keypad when you would like to get into the queue to speak. Callers, if you're watching the meeting on any other device or television, please mute that before speaking. Oh, nobody's watching, right? When you hear the prompt on your telephone that you've been unmuted, please begin speaking by giving your name and address for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. Remember, it is not necessary to provide testimony if you've already provided comments via voicemail or BetterTogetherEdina.org. Call in if you have new comments or information to bring forward. Does anyone want to speak in person? Is there anyone here to speak? Okay. Are we going to wait a minute for callers or...
We do have one person who has indicated they would like to speak, so I'm going to go ahead and unmute them.
Yes, my name is Lori Gross, 5513 Park Place. I'm not making a comment on this particular public hearing, but are you aware that your meeting is not being livestreamed tonight on the city website? Watch a meeting or on Edina Facebook?
I can answer that, yes. This is Lauren Cipanaller. We are having some major technical issues tonight. We are recording the meeting and it will be live, it will be on our website tomorrow.
All right, thank you. Somebody might want to put that on the website in case people are trying to get on to watch, so... But I have no comment on the public hearing. Thank you. I just wanted to make you aware of that there's an issue with your livestream. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in line?
No, we do not have anyone else who wishes to speak. I believe it's safe to proceed.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. All right, Brett, back to the commission. Any, uh, who has comments, questions for the applicant or...
I just have one quick question for the, for the applicant. Is there a, is there a reason why, uh, it needs to be 20 feet rather than even 21.7 feet, which it is today? Is there a reason why it needs to get even two feet more than it already is non-conforming?
I can answer that. So, um, initially when we came to staff, we actually asked for 15, and it was through conversations with them that we came up with the 20 feet. And the biggest reason is the further we push this into the hill, the more excavating that has to happen on the backside, and the more we impact the trees that are kind of the great big old girl's trees that are on the backside of this property because of the steep slope. So, uh, you know, it's possible we can push it back a little bit, but it's going to start to take out more trees as we go further back.
Okay, thank you.
Um, can you introduce yourself and say your name for the record?
Uh, Dan DeMules. I'm with Murphy &amp; Co Design, 235 Lake Street East, YZ, Minnesota.
And I noticed on there that you also have kind of a water control plan, and you have a trench from the driveway. So you're planning on controlling some...
Yes, that's a requirement from the city, but also just due to the steep nature of the site, it's definitely a concern. Um, and currently, the water all runs behind the house to get out, um, so we're working on that as part of this project as well.
And kind of keeping it on your site and off the neighbor's site?
Yep, there's an infiltration basin that was designed by the stormwater engineer.
And can I ask one more question about the, um, on the site plan? The house to the west, there's one, there's the setback and shows a portion of the house, but that is, most of the house is even further back than that? If I was looking on the GPS?
Yeah, so the property to the west, it's actually a pretty similar house to this one, kind of right in line with it. Um, and we're not changing kind of that front line, it's just the 20 feet is because the cul-de-sac cuts in on the back. The garage is almost entirely behind the house, the current house.
The grudge you've designed is behind this current house? Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? Deliberations? Yeah, deliberations? Now's the time to speak?
Well, as, as I was reading through this, um, you know, when the, and there was one comment, we don't necessarily, I do appreciate the comments from neighbors, and we don't, you know, usually, um, have them, um, well, I'm gonna not worry about that, but there was one comment by a neighbor which I really appreciated, and that is the fact that this addition really works seamlessly with this house. Um, and I do appreciate it that it's set back from the existing house and that it has a lower roof than this existing house. So this is a front yard setback. Um, you know, it's another one of those where it's the average of all the houses on the streets are all really large lots. You're nowhere near the coverage ratio or even the hardcover ratio on the site. It is a heavily wooded site. You're saving the existing house, um, and it's still a 20-foot setback. So, um, I think this is, and they're also controlling water runoff on the property. I mean, it's not just controlling it, they're putting a trench in the front, which I really kind of appreciate. So I think this house is, um, you know, there's a practical difficulty, the steepness of the lot. The existing garage is smaller than average. And I think this is a perfectly good use of the variance setback. We did a variance setback last week, um, for a house on an existing foundation, and I think this is, this is a good use of our, the variance process, so I support this.
Any other comments? Do I motion?
I'll just say it's, this project's very similar to one that we reviewed in the Rolling Green Neighborhood a few months ago, right? And it just kind of highlights the difficulties that we get into when we start introducing means and averages into calculations for setbacks, um, right? The intent is, right, just to maintain a uniformity in the appearance of the neighborhood. The neighbors all support this. The problem is when you have the mean and average and you get an outlier, then everybody else is negatively impacted, right? But I don't think that anything we're doing here, again, alters the essential character of the neighborhood. We've talked about the difficulty with the slope, um, the shape of the cul-de-sac, et cetera. So, I mean, I think this, like Commissioner, Commissioner Velt said, pretty easily meets the requirements, uh, you know, of being a justified variance, so.
So make a motion to approve a 17 and a half foot front yard setback variance request at 4619 Town Circle, subject to conditions set out in the staff report.
Second.
Any discussion anyone wants? No? Okay, then, uh, voice vote or all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion approves. Okay, our next public hearing is a preliminary zoning, preliminary rezoning, overall development plan, site plan, and subdivision for 7235 France Avenue. And Carrie T., Community Development Director, will present.
Uh, thank you, Chair, members of the commission. This is a site you're all familiar with. The applicant has gone through a couple of versions of sketch plans over the past year. It's the Macy's Furniture Site in the Greater Southdale District on the east side of France. The, the site is guided in our comprehensive plan for, as community activity center. It's that area in between France and York where the city envisions some of its most dense development in the city in the comprehensive plan. It's currently zoned, PCD3 Planned Commercial District. A look at the existing site today, it's the, the furniture store is about 90,000 square feet with a large surface parking lot. So here's a look at the first sketch plan. The idea here is to divide the property into four parcels with four buildings, provide public space all around each of the buildings, provide a connection from the promenade to France. So again, here is that first version. The second version, um, they came back when the, the city started talking about providing a connection for, from this site that we're looking at today and the future development of the 727250, um, to the west where that site sits vacant today. So they adjusted their plans to accommodate either going underneath France or over. So however direction the city decides to take, the proposal before you this evening can accommodate either option. So some of the changes that they've made based on the feedback from the Planning Commission and City Council from those original sketch plans, they've increased the setback from the promenade. Some of those first versions were just 15 feet, it's now 34, 35 feet. The south setbacks have increased, again, to shift that east-west pedestrian connection a little bit to the north. shift that east-west pedestrian connection a little bit to the north. They've shifted the 11-story building to the northwest, or excuse me, the southwest lot. The height's still, I'll show a graphic in a minute, doesn't meet our setback requirement to the R1 district. They've reduced some of the above ground, above-ground parking levels. They've added green building walls, added public art. They are meeting this, or they will meet the city's sustainable buildings policy. 5% of the parking stalls will be EV charging stations with the ability to upgrade to 10%. There would be utilizing solar panels. Affordable housing would be provided in the development. And they've reduced some of the office space, and there's more residential units. So here's a look at the proposed site plan. So I'll just go through each one quickly here. So the southwest parcel, this one here, this is the 11-story, 155-foot-tall mixed-use building. It would have just over 47,000 square feet of office. There would be 49 senior condominiums. Those would be owner-occupied, so that is a change from sketch plan as well. Part of those owner-occupied units would be affordable as well, 10%. There would be 9,000 square feet of retail and a restaurant on the main level, and 28, 280-stall parking garage underneath. The northwest parcel would be seven stories, again, a mixed-use building, 20,000 square feet of office, 124 apartments, and just under 8,000 square feet of retail. There'd be 318 parking stalls within that, within that building. Moving to the northeast, this, both of these buildings on the east side would be seven stories. This northeast would have 223 units of rental apart, rental apartments with parking underneath. The southeast parcel would include 176 units, 4,000 square feet of retail and a restaurant, so there'd be three restaurants within the buildings, and a 380-stall parking garage. I'll just quickly move through some of the building renderings. The applicant will provide much more detail on building materials. They have a video that shows, shows the project in a little more detail, so I will move through these rather quickly. So this request requires a preliminary rezoning from PCD3 to planned unit development. That would include an overall development plan. The idea here, I believe, is to build all of this in one phase. But the PUD would be used to ensure the affordable housing is included within the project. Also, provide us the ability to require a meeting the sustainable buildings policy. In return, they're asking for flexibility in the, some of the underlying zoning standards, and I'll go through that in a minute. And there are also a preliminary site plan, and subdivision, and preliminary plat that would establish individual lots for each building. So a review of the parking and the site plan. Looking at the overall parking, based on the uses and square footage, they're required 1,339 parking stalls, or excuse me, 1,117 parking stalls, and they're providing 1,300. So a little over what's required, but they do meet that standard. WSB conducted a parking study, and they've concluded that they would need 1,041 stalls for this project, so there would be adequate parking. WSB also did a traffic study, and they concluded that no roadway improvements are needed with this project. They are on the line with us this evening, should there be any questions in regard to that traffic study. Access to the site would be off the existing access points, one along the north lot line as it comes in. There would be a north-south road constructed that would all, and they would also utilize that existing access to the south. Access to the buildings would be off that north-south street, this location, and this location here. And again, the pedestrian connections are kind of the, the feature of the project. 50-foot setback along France expands to a little over 60 feet to the south, but with that sidewalk, sidewalks along the building. There is a regional bike trail that moves through. They've indicated a willingness to expand the width of that, subject to approval of the district. They are providing some connections to the promenade, and again, the main feature, connecting to either that underground under France or a bridge over. In regard to landscaping, based on the perimeter of this site, 61 over-story trees are required. They're proposing, they would be planting 142, 39 trees would be removed, but they're replacing over 400 caliber inch of trees, so many more trees compared to existing conditions. Terms of building material, it would be manufactured stone, metal panels. Again, the applicant will go through in more detail of the building materials, but they are requesting flexibility from our standards. The, the brick and stone around the buildings varies between 20 and 72% of that first 60-foot height requirement around the buildings. And the transparency requirement at ground level ranges between 60 and 75%, so they're not quite meeting the 75, so they're requesting some flexibility there as well. And the first level, the first level story, the, the first level height, they're requesting at 15 feet, where the code requires 20. In terms of the subdivision, this is the preliminary plat, again, establishing new lots for each building. There is a park dedication requirement of $5,000 per unit. That would be collected at the time of a building permit. And setbacks, I mentioned, they are requesting flexibility to the required setbacks. Setbacks, they're meeting the front setback along France at 50 feet, but all other sides, the requirement is based on the height of the building. So they're requesting flexibility there. I mentioned the R1 setback. I'll show a graphic that shows that in a minute. The building height overlay here is eight stories and 96 feet, so they're requesting that 11-story building that's at 155 feet. Flexibility in the floor area ratio requirement, and then I mentioned the transparency and first-floor building height. So this is a graphic that demonstrates the setbacks. So again, 34 feet to the promenade, be about 40 feet to the trail, the pathway at the promenade, 49 feet to the south, 20 to the north lot line. There would be a 60-foot setback in between, in between the buildings, over 100 feet to the south, and then I mentioned the, the France setbacks. So we, that measurement to the nearest R1 district, based on the height of the, the building, they need a nine times the height of the, of the building. So they need a 930-foot setback to the nearest R1 property, which is located here. And it's a little under 800 feet, so they're requesting flexibility again through the PUD. So the primary issue for the, the Planning Commission is, is this proposal reasonable to justify the PUD rezoning? So an argument can be made either way. So staff has prepared alternatives for the Planning Commission to consider, and your staff report both for approval and denial. Again, this is our pyramid of discretion that we look at. They're requesting a rezoning, so we're down into the green area where the city has complete discretion whether to approve or deny this request. But staff is recommending approval. We believe that the PUD criteria is met, so I will move through each of those nine standards where the code says, the purpose and intent of the PUD is to include most or all of those standards. So the first is providing the establishment of a PUD in an appropriate setting. So again, the comprehensive plan calls this a community activity center. Maximum density allowed here is up to 150 units an acre. When the Greater Southdale Working Group worked on the Southdale District Plan, one of their overarching objectives is highlighted here. This is taken from, from that plan. The objective is to maximize pedestrian activity throughout the district, with the public realm as the connective tissue that gives the district its unique identity and sets the stage for a remarkable daily experience for those who live, work, and play in the Greater Southdale District. Again, they envisioned a vibrant, forward-looking, people-filled Greater Southdale District. 45% of this, all of this public, all of the area where the, the, the trails, the, the connections through the site, that makes up 45% of this entire site, that would all be dedicated for public use. The second is promote a more creative and efficient approach to land use. This would create a much more creative, efficient use of the land compared to existing. There's no surface parking. That's another one of the goals of the Southdale District Guidelines. Pedestrian movement being key throughout the site. And again, we talked about the Three Rivers Trail potential upgrade there. The third, provide for variations to the strict application of land use regulations in order to improve site design. Some of the desired elements that we're looking for would include sustainable design, greater utilization of technologies in building design, special construction materials, landscaping, lighting, et cetera. So with, this is kind of gets into that give-to-get as part of that PUD negotiating. So what the city's getting out of, out of this is, one, including the affordable housing, they're, they would meet the affordable housing policy within the project, so all of the units would be included in the development. That would include 53 rental units, and five for-sale condos, those senior condos. So that's a housing type that we've not seen owner-occupied housing in quite some time. Again, the parking is all underground, no surface parking, and probably the biggest one is that 45% dedication to the public for use moving through the site. Some of the additional requirements ensure high-quality design. So again, this is going to be required to meet our sustainable buildings policy above and beyond a standard, what the building code allows. So that adds quite an expense to the project. Again, that traffic study was done. There's no impact or improvements needed in the roadways around the area. And I mentioned the increased trees that would be planted on the site. This is a true mixed-use project. This is kind of what we're looking for with the PUD, where we're getting a variety of, of uses on the site. I mentioned the affordable housing. But with that, staff is recommending approval, subject to the findings and conditions that are outlined in your staff report. But there is also, if the Planning Commission does not believe that those PUD standards are met, there is an option for denial as well. With that, I can stand for questions, and the development team is ready to make a presentation to provide a little more detail on the project.
Thank you for that great presentation. Any questions? Yes?
Carrie, somewhere in the packet, there were, there were two things that caught my eye from, I think what it was referencing was the changes from the 2023 plan to the current one. One was above-ground garage at the northwest building reduced from four levels to one.
Yeah, I think that goes to there's less office space. So an office space drives more need for parking.
Yep.
So they've added more residential, so the amount of parking was reduced.
And was that the discussion at the time to, the feedback was to reduce the amount of office space?
I'm not sure if that was specifically mentioned, other than trying to minimize the visibility of the parking and reduce parking if possible.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
Anyone else?
Okay, there's a lot to unpack on this one. Try as I may, I wasn't able to scan every single detail with 674-page packet in three days, but, so I'll need some help on this one a little bit in terms of some of the questions that I had, and some of the questions our residents brought up. Traffic, right, the traffic study, could you, or traffic people, you said the traffic engineers were on the phone, right?
Hoping they're there, yes.
Okay. Could you have them summarize a little bit, some of the key findings and stuff from that traffic study, right? I looked through it, and I know, you know, there was no recommendation for additional road improvements and whatnot, but I'd like to hear at least summarized, especially for the people in the audience, what, what they found.
You can hear us?
I believe that would be Mallory, is that correct?
Yes, either Mallory or Allison.
Okay, it looks like Mallory has unmuted herself. Mallory, can you hear us? I'll just give her a minute here in case it's audio on her, and...
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Sorry, my headset's not working. Yeah, so I'm with WSB. I helped out with the traffic study. I guess just to summarize it, the original one that was done last year generated about 5,300 new trips, daily trips. This new one, this new site generates about 4,500 daily trips. Now, if you want to look at that in terms of like peak hours of the day, the AM, so like your AM peak hour, 7 to 8 AM, that generates about 416 trips. About half are going in the site and half are leaving the site, which was different than the previous one, which had more office space. So there was more people going into the site in the morning and leaving the site in the afternoon versus now, the trips are kind of split, half and half. Both generate just over about 400 trips in the AM peak and in the PM peak as well. As far as impacts to the road, the signal at France Avenue and Gallagher Drive, that's really the only one we're expecting to see a little bit of an impact with more people being on that east leg, traffic volumes. More people are taking a left out of there, so the signal timing might have to be slightly modified, which gives more green time essentially to the, the side streets on Gallagher and a little bit less green time on France Avenue. But overall, it's negligible delay, five to 10 seconds on average, just at that intersection. So no improvements are being recommended. The only thing would be queuing on that east leg at Gallagher. Right now, I think that westbound left turn lane is only about 100 feet, so it's going to queue back there during the peak times. But other than that, it's, there's not much impact to France Avenue. And if you have any other specific questions, just let me know, I can help answer.
Mallory, can you help me on, think about this maybe more intelligently? 4,500 daily trips sounds like a lot to me on France Avenue where there are a lot of stoplights and it, I mean, there's traffic on there. So how do you, when you're making those evaluations, because I think that is something that a lot of people are concerned about, how do you decide that 4,500 daily trips is negligible on that road?
So if you look at it, France Avenue is very heavy traffic, just in like one peak hour of the day. It's about 2,000 vehicles along France Avenue. So if you look at our, our peak hour traffic, we're only adding about 400. So really, France Avenue can handle quite a bit more with it being three lanes in each direction. But it does seem like a lot, but when you break it up just by looking at the peak hour, it really doesn't impact just because there's so much traffic already, but there's, there's capacity on the roadway to handle that traffic. But there's, there's capacity on the roadway to handle that traffic.
I was gonna ask, um, so I wanted to focus more on the, so France, I think it's quite wide and can handle a lot. But I was kind of more worried or wanted to talk about the, uh, roads to the north and south, directly to the north and south. So you have the small road that connects up to Lunds. Uh, and you have the property to the south, right? And we have a north-south road connecting, going through the property right now. So I guess this property access conversion to Plaza, that's a road, correct? I mean, that goes, that goes through the property all the way. In terms of being able to handle additional traffic there, right? That number of trips on those two small areas and being able, and turning out of Lunds and whatnot. What does that traffic impact look like? You know, I mean, in terms of, I, Lunds can be a bit of a challenge in the turnout of already, but it just handling that amount of traffic through that north-south connection. Were there concerns there in terms of additional pedestrian safety, ways to handle that, those increased number of trips, et cetera?
Um, what we're expecting is only probably about seven percent of those people are going to be coming to or from, um, Hazleton Road. So we didn't account for anybody kind of cutting up through there just because there's that free right um, onto France Avenue out of the site. So we're expecting that if somebody wants to go north, they're probably just going to use that free right versus trying to cut through, um, all these sort of properties and try and get out that Lunds access if it's already kind of busy.
So the dedication fee is going to be two-point-eight, uh, six million dollars. And that's a one-time-only fee, so there's no annual fee, which is unlike some of the other, um, complexes around Centennial Lakes, is my understanding. And that park dedication fee is to be used by the city for non-operating expenses of any park in the city? Is that correct?
I believe that's correct, yes.
Will this grant, um, access to the Edinburgh facilities for the people who live in these complexes?
They wouldn't gain any special privileges that any other resident of Edina wouldn't have.
Okay, so, so there, the people who live around Centennial Lakes can have access to the Edinburgh property, but the rest of the city doesn't without paying for it.
I guess I don't know the detail of how, how Edinburgh works, but there's no, there's nothing connected to this project with Edinburgh that gives them special.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is they will not get access to Edinburgh by living in this complex.
Well, access as any Edina resident would have.
I, I may be able to speak to that a bit. There are some homes and apartments surrounding Edinburgh that do have free use of the pool and track.
Right.
It sounds like this would not be included in those homes.
Thank you. That answers my question, Liz. Thank you. And, um, is this in the Edina or the Richfield School District?
Edina.
Okay, so then I will, I'm going to kind of follow up on the questions, um, or the points made about the traffic study. And, um, so I want to make sure it's clear, um, that on Gallagher, there's a light, um, there's a four-way light. So you can turn in any direction. But when you go up to what they're calling, I think, the business entrance, which is kind of a shared driveway now at the Macy's site and the Lunds site, you can only turn right, right? It, it, it's not a four-way intersection. You can, uh, turn left onto Seventy Second, but you can't turn, um, right. So that means that of the five-hundred-and-seventy-two units, anybody that lived in there that wanted to make a left out of the complex would have to go down to Gallagher in order to turn left if they wanted to go on four-ninety-four. And conversely, if they were wanting to come south from Crosstown or something like that, they'd again have to go all the way down to Gallagher in order to turn. I'm not a traffic engineer, but I drive by this many times a day. And, um, five-hundred-and-seventy-two additional units, um, I have a hard time. I mean, we ended up with some Ds on, um, once we did the build-out on the traffic study. We ended up with quite a few Ds. So I think, um, including that there's no additional roadways, um, I'm struggling that there's no improvements and no roadways needed. So that's, and, and, and you stand by basically everything that the, uh, traffic study said.
We go by, by what the professionals have provided us, yes.
And is there discussion if the, um, the person is still in the line about bicycle traffic?
Yes, she is.
Can you address bicycle traffic, please?
Hi, I guess, yeah, my study, um, we didn't really look at bicycle traffic for the site. It was mainly, I don't know, traffic, vehicle traffic at the site. And just to go back on your point of the, the level of service D at some of those, um, intersections. Typically, uh, if you want to look at level of service, level of service D is waiting less than fifty-five seconds at a signal. That would be considered an acceptable amount of delay. Typically, once you hit over a minute, then we might start looking at mitigation options. But people are generally willing to wait, um, a minute at a signal to, to get through the intersection. So that's why we aren't recommending any, any improvements to the road.
Okay, thank you, Maren.
Just, uh, one question on the setback to R1 property. I don't remember exactly how those were determined. And it's a little surprising that an eleven-story building has a setback standard almost three times mu- uh, higher than a seven-story building. So you just spent a minute on where those numbers come from, those standards?
Yeah, I, I don't know the origins of them, but, um, yeah, at, at nine stories, anything above nine stories requires that extra setback. So the seven-story building, it requires a lesser setback. So let's see, I've got the, yeah, the seven-story building requires a three-hundred-and-twenty-eight-foot setback, and that one's about six-hundred-and-eighty feet. But it's the eleven-story building that, the taller the building, the greater the setback is, is required.
And that's because, why? What, what I'm, what are we trying to achieve is what I can't recall?
Maybe it's, um, lesser impact to single-family homes viewing a, a taller building.
Okay, thanks.
So I'm trying to decipher my notes here, but the, uh, Activity Center, the CAC, in that comp plan has seven-hundred-and-seventeen to one-thousand-one-hundred-ninety-five, um, residences allowed for this site. I think I did the calculations on the seven-point-nine-seven acres and the density and came up with seven-hundred-and-seventeen to nearly twelve-hundred units. And this is going to be five-hundred-and-ninety, so under, under.
Yeah, it's about seventy-two units an acre, a little over seventy units an acre.
Okay.
Where it's different is this being a mixed-use, there's all of that office and commercial and retail.
Okay, thank you.
The building height setback, that comes from the POD requirements, right?
Yeah, it's in the planned commercial district. It's in several zoning districts.
Yeah, okay, okay, because I, I found it on the code, uh, when I was reviewing this, that it's, you know, five to six, so in like section thirty-six dash five-seven-nine, you have five, six stories. It's twice the building height, seven to eight stories, four times the building height. And then nine or more stories, six times the height of the building. It's a required setback from R1. Which is, you know, just it, it is what it is, I suppose. It's just what, kind of arbitrary. But I, I know, I understand the point of it, right? You don't want to be blocking out the sun from everybody's, uh, R1 houses and, you know, you want to create a gentle transition and whatnot. So I think that was, that's the main point of that. But it is a little bit, you know, I can see where that discrepancy comes from the seven and eleven.
Comments? No? Um, I have one question. So the, um, the existing promenade is on city property, right? And if I understood the, um, planning diagram correctly, this extension of the promenade is all going to be on private space?
Correct, yes.
But it's going to have a, uh, a, what's it called for?
Yeah, so there'd be easements, maintenance agreements. The, the maintenance of all that space would be taken care of by the property owner. So the city doesn't maintain any of that. There would just be an easement over it that grants the public access to those spaces.
Okay, do you know any, excuse me, any idea why the city used to want to own that property and now they don't really care about it?
Which property?
The promenade, like the existing promenade is city property. They didn't make easements. They bought the property, I presume.
Originally, it was supposed to be a bus, a transit, um, within the Southdale District. It was going to be a rubber tire circulator through the district, but that never got built. And, um, city changed directions on it and turned it into what it is today.
Was it, so it was always, when the Southdale District was built, it was always city property?
It was there, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. Other questions? Okay, thank you. Now the developer?
Testing. Good evening, Chair, members of the Planning Commission. My name's Patrick. On behalf of our entire, uh, project team here, we just want to say thank you for the opportunity to connect with you again on what we think is an awesome project and, um, have another chance to get some feedback. Uh, I'm going to start off with some high-level comments and a high-level introduction, and then I'll turn it over to the architectural team for, uh, a 3D fly-through of the project. So I'm really excited to have a chance to talk this through with you. The project team includes, uh, a couple developers. My name is Patrick. I'm with Enclave Development for the record, one-six-six-zero, South Highway one-hundred, St. Louis Park. Our lead developer on the project, co-developer on the project is Lifestyle Communities. They're here this evening as well. ESG up here with you, lead architect, partner architect, Pope Architecture is here as well. Stand Tech is Civil, and then we have Confluence Design for landscaping and public room design. My comments that I'm going to make, really high-level, um, I just wanted to walk through kind of the why and how we got here. It's been a year and a half to almost two-year process of public input that we've gone through to get to the point that we are today. We take that opportunity to interact with the public and stakeholders, private and public individuals and groups seriously. And we've done our best to take a lot of that feedback and try to, uh, reflect that within our proposed design. So, uh, excited to share that with you this evening. Carrie did a great job of walking through how the site was. I guess you should take a step back. Uh, I'm going to walk through kind of five high-level, uh, changes that we made to the site. There's obviously a detailed log and a lot of specifics, but I'm going to keep it summarized version. I'm going to go through five high-level changes that we made. Uh, the first thing that we did, um, to Carrie's point that he outlined, is we adjusted the site plan. After the, the, uh, France Ave connection, public process occurred, we adjusted our site plan to reflect flexibility to allow for connection above France, below France, no connection or at-grade. So there's a little bit of detail behind that. We also, shown on the screen here, highlighted, you can see the Nine Mile Creek Trail System along the south side. Wanted to make sure that that was integrated to any future connection, uh, along France. And so I can talk in detail on the specific things that we did, but Carrie, uh, did a nice job talking through that. Public realm, obviously, that's a big topic, um, and a big part of the vision, or at least our interpretation of the vision from the city on this site. Uh, this site really is, uh, designed around public realm. There's a lot of public realm on the site. Big-picture-wise, we want this to be a walkable development. We want it to be mixed-use. We don't want the public to not feel welcomed in this development and not have the feeling that, oh, I'm walking out of public right-of-way into a private development. Maybe I'm welcome here, maybe I'm not. Maybe I'm welcome here for certain hours, maybe I'm not. We don't want that feeling. The intention is here is that this is a welcoming place for the entire public. And also very specifically, feedback that we received, we want this development to create a connection from the promenade to France. We want France, excuse me, the promenade to reach out to France, to create placemaking opportunities, to pull the look and feel of the promenade to France. And I'll touch on that in a little bit more detail here on this next slide. So one of the specific things that we did, and one of the tactics that you'll see show up in the 3D fly-through from the architect, is this center, we call it the Center East to West Promenade. Everybody has a different title. We should probably brand it and come up with something so it's easier to describe verbally. But I think a little bit easier to compare and contrast. The original proposal that we brought for, uh, before you a year and a half ago, this area was very much concrete, very much, uh, impervious surface. A little bit, uh, more car activity in this area, less sunlight, a little bit colder, a little bit less green. Uh, the design was more linear and rectangular, felt more like, almost like a private plaza area. We took in a lot of feedback, uh, a lot of good feedback, and really, this is a major change we made in the project. We essentially reversed it. The intention is that this feels like an extension of the promenade, that the landscaping design, the swooping, uh, design of these landscaped areas, the orientation of buildings to allow sunlight to come through, removal of underground parking between the two east buildings to allow deep-rooted trees to grow, um, really changing the architecture of all the buildings to have a really strong concentration at the pedestrian level along this corridor. The intention is to not make this center corridor just a plaza and an afterthought and a requirement that the city made the developer do. To, rather, in fact, make it a highlight of development, make it a high point, make it the strong point of the development. So there's a lot of intention in the design that we put together to put a lot of action and pedestrian orientation in that area. The fourth major thing that we did, um, in the vein of public realm, the east side of the site, the setbacks that we have here are greater than recently, recent projects approved up and down the corridor, projects next to us. That was in response to the feedback that we heard, that we don't want this development to just simply hook up and connect to the promenade. We want the promenade to be, to benefit from this development as well. In other words, for it to expand. And in the area that it does expand into our site, we don't want it to look and feel like private space and a private area. We want it to look and feel like an extension and growth of the promenade. That would come with public access easements. But, uh, to the point of the discussion of operations and maintenance, it's the responsibility of the developer to operate, maintain, to construct that, to pay dead park dedication fees. So, um, that area includes some specific things in response to specific feedback. For example, include a restaurant against the promenade. We did add that to the project. Secondly, include a room, a new public amenity or room on the promenade spilling into the site. We have a dog park that's included on the northeast side of the site. That'd be a public dog park. It will have room to expand. It isn't a amenitized dog park, so it's not just a fenced-in area with, uh, with rocks and, and, and nothing. It's, it's going to be, we believe, a, a, a nice feature, so. And then the architecture in the first two levels of the east side of these buildings, these two east buildings, there's intentionality with pedestrian, uh, uh, facing architecture in the first two levels, enhanced architecture along with patios and connections from ground-floor units. The last slide here is kind of a catch-all. We did receive requests to have green walls on this project. So the south side of the south buildings, where we're going to get the most sunlight, we did add green walls. You see it as the hashed area on the south side of the two buildings. We did add art moments in the project. That was some of the feedback that we received. So where you see the four red dots as the architect goes through the 3D presentation, you'll notice some art in that area, those areas. And then lastly, a little bit hard to show in a diagram or describe in just like one sentence, but we did take to heart the request to have, um, convertible parking in these buildings and to be able, later, if parking demand is less than we expect, to be able to convert parking to residential units or office or additional retail. And we can talk through that, uh, if that's a desire for the planning commission. Those are the high-level takeaways that we have, um, that we took from the public, uh, input process and then we intended to infuse into the design that the architect's going to share with you. So if we may, and if- So if we may, and if you're comfortable, we'd like to turn it over to the architect when you're ready. Thank you.
Design? All right. Well, okay, we'll get to the good part here, is what I think, but. Uh, so I'm Lucas Van Sistine, uh, with ESG Architecture and Design and Christopher Wulleth.
Yes, this is working. Yes, and Christopher Wulleth with ESG, uh, project architect.
And thank you for your time, and it's an honor to be here, and thank you for the process. So what I'm going to do is jump to, uh, it's a live model. We have set up different vantage points, so we'll kind of fly there and then look around, talk it through, and then move to the next spot. So exciting. It'll, it, it's, plans are beautiful and words are wonderful, but it, this hopefully will give a sense of the scale and materiality and, and the things we've been talking about. Hopefully you will feel them, uh, by seeing them. So real quick, we're going to start on France, kind of in the middle. We'll move west to east, end up on the promenade, and then we'll do that again on the south, and then again on the north. So hopefully as we're moving through, you'll kind of see where we are. Okay, so does everyone, do you see that on your screen? Okay, so here we are. This would be along France, looking to the east. So you can see uh, two buildings fronting France. You see that promenade extension that's um, coming through all the way to France here. And the idea with these buildings, and you'll see the architecture change a little as you get closer to the promenade. The idea with these is that they feel a little more commercial. They're a little more of busy France Avenue that a lot of people experience from a car. So it's okay. Um, you, you see the, a lot of glass at the base. Commercial office space. And, and then in those uh, places, the materials are, that's where we've got a lot of that brick. You can see, you know, the brick going up, the cast stone going up. And so you see the play of massings here. You know, the left building's a little shorter, but those, the mass is a little more forward, whereas the building on the right is taller, but you've got mass low and then it stepped back. So there's sort of a sculpting of the massing there. And then the, the materiality feels a little more commercial overall. As opposed to when we move back, it'll feel a little more residential. I think while we're here, I'll just note, you can see this sculpture here. That's a placeholder, and the idea is that there's a, a, a nice sculpture piece there. Could be sculpture that's in front of uh, the Macy's store right now, or maybe that wants to be somewhere else. But the thought is to, to reuse that somewhere on site. So I'll move in and we can, we can jump back. Actually, I'll, we'll look around a little, rather than just as still. Obviously, we're missing buildings, but soon it'll be just absolutely realistic here. I, I feel like this is a step up from when we just provided one sketch. So from here, we're going to move, move straight in along the promenade. You can see we're kind of halfway. Um, you can start to see the landscaping and how the, the landscape architect is here and he can speak more eloquently. But the idea is that some of those species and, and the flavor of the promenade is uh, permeating through into here. Let's do a quick look around. You can see some of the, the, the massing varying. There's that sculpture that we were looking at. The intent here is obviously, as was mentioned, that this feels public. You can meander through, you can stop. There's, there might be some planned activities, or maybe it's just passive. Keep looking around. The thought here is that this wall, it's not quite, it's not fully developed, but that it would be some sort of uh, scrim there, some sort of um, a little bit of an art feature there. You can start to see from here also, the architecture changing a little. So this cast stone, which was all the way up the building on France, is now, happens in one and two story moments to, to show entry. And we're starting to transition to a more tripartite, you know, base, middle, top, which feels more residential. Okay, so we'll jump ahead to the middle, middle here. So this would be that east, west, north, south intersection. So this is looking south, looking east, and then north, and then west, back to France. You can see we're highlighting building entries with a lot of glass. And then, you know, if it's parking or if it's a unit, there's less glass. Start to see this, we're, we're, that, talk a little bit about the, the palette. Um, you know, there's, there's a lot of neutral colors, you know, lighter, whiter color cast stone, and then um, some grays. But the thought is that this uh, blue color and then some wood tones are enriching the, the palette with a little bit of color. Um, but in a, in a more sophisticated way. So we'll continue on our pathway to these townhomes. Spin around, so we're looking east toward the promenade, looking north, and then back. You can see looking back toward France. So we're looking to vary the scale a little bit here. You know, this has a more of a townhome walk-up feel. You can start to see that transition of public. You know, this, this obviously feels really public, but then someone could be sitting on their front porch. And because there's a little bit of elevation and a little bit of landscaping between, you kind of get the best of both worlds, where it feels really public and welcoming, but yet you could sit on your front porch and, and not feel like everyone's, you know, looking at you or just feel like you're um, like it's too public.
That also affords an extra use of activity too, right? So when um, we don't necessarily have to program the space, we can let the tenants themselves be out there grilling or visiting with their little, you know, having a cup of tea with a bistro chair out front. You can imagine it being activated just by the residents there, as well as the public that may be uh, passing through that space.
So I'm going to kind of move up a little, just to start to understand. I know previously we've had two C-shaped buildings facing south. And since that time, um, we've located the pool, you can see to the right on the north building. And what is, what we're doing, opening the other, the, the C shape, the courtyard facing north, is letting that daylight into the pool area and then also into the promenade area here. And you can see the activity up there. Um, that, that's obviously all private, but it, it affords us not trying to put a bunch of private stuff on the, on the, on the street level, on the ground plane. So there's, there's kind of a layering of activity there. Okay, now we'll jump out to the promenade. Look around, so you can see we're looking back towards France. We're looking at, you know, cafe, restaurant on the corner of this building. That would be the, the southeast building. You can see the, the, the tripartite architecture here, where it feels more residential than the front buildings, which feel a little more commercial. Where you have that heavier cast stone material and then a lighter material above that. And then you can see the stepping back with terraces on the top. This one happens to be uh, common to the building. You know, these over here would be unit terraces, but there's, there's this stepping back layering effect. And then you can see also what we were talking about earlier, where you go from feels really public of the promenade, and then that stepping up, stepping back with landscaping to help the units uh, feel, feel um, private also. We're looking to the north here, and this is that, that dog park that we were talking about, that would be a public amenity for people to use, um, and then operated by the, the development.
I think from this vantage point too, you really get to start to feel that uh, that definition of a street room that the guidelines are referring to and really set out to be a goal of these developments, uh, referring to the Greater Southdale District guidelines. So you start to see how we're molding and sculpting that space through the central spine and really building this activity for the pedestrian at a human scale.
And even using the term "street room" is exciting to me because it implies that we're looking for space, rather than, a lot of times you think of architecture as a building and, you know, a parking lot around it, which that is not making space. It's not making landscape. So even using the term "street room", I think is, is exciting because it, it speaks to that. Okay, from here, we'll jump, we're going to jump back to France, and we'll go south and north a little quicker. We, we covered a lot of the main ideas. So we're back at France, this would be at Gallagher, kind of looking north, looking east. And then we'll move to the midpoint. Here, we're, we're looking north here. The idea of this signage is that it could be a, it's an opportunity for a public sign to show the promenade, the, the taller one. And then there's a, you know, a, a shorter one at the bottom that could tell people, hey, there's a cafe around the corner off the promenade, that sort of thing.
I do think it's important for the success of that retail that's back on the promenade side to have some visibility back towards uh, France Avenue. So as you're entering that property, maybe it's the first time you've been there, you now have a sense of, oh yeah, I'm, I'm headed the right way and I can be directed to the internal parking to make my way back there.
And then we'll jump one more time over to the promenade. And see um, this, the walk-up units here. Promenade this way, and then looking back toward France. We've been working with a little bit of an idea, the existing Macy's building is like the landscape flowing into the building. Uh, so that, that concept, we've been thinking along the south here, where the landscape is flowing and kind of growing up the building. Okay, from there, we'll jump to the north, north side, back to France. Here we are, looking south on France. See glass at the base, you know, a little amenity terrace for this building. See the, the access here. And the intent is obviously that cars are, it's, it's easy enough to understand when you're arriving in a car where to go, but it, hopefully it's obvious that the pedestrian focus is, is a, is a big deal here. So we'll jump to the middle. So we're looking south along that, that street. We're looking at an art moment along uh, the wall here. Looking back to France. We'll jump, we'll jump back to the promenade at the northeast corner where that dog park is. So looking back to France, and then looking south along the promenade. So I think from there, we'll jump, we just had a few more slides and then open it up. Are there additional questions?
And, you know, in order to... Thanks, I think just for the benefit of time, I'm going to give the abridged version of these slides. Um, we really just wanted to call attention here, as we're kind of winding down the presentation, to recognizing the importance that the guidelines have had over what we've been doing in terms of developing the design. So one, recognizing those amazing guidelines, they're progressive, they're informative, they're really well-written, and you know, the city should be really proud of uh, having worked so hard to assemble them over the years. There's a list of aspirations in those guidelines that really set the goal standards for the future of uh, of the Greater Southdale District. And uh, rather, again, than belabor the point of all these, because I think we generally covered them. I just want you to recognize uh, the, some of the guiding principles we look for in the guidelines that we hope is evident, you're seeing evidence of as we're moving through these presentations. So the building block is really of those guiding, of those guidelines to start with walkable blocks. And that's essentially where we started the project too, of being able to build these quadrants for the site. Build human, human scale street rooms, we talked about that a little bit through the views. Neighborhood connectivity through corridors that focus on activity. The little uh, diagram up in the upper right, it's an updated version of something that we've started all the way back at Sketch Plan Review, that's really held true as we've continued to push the design forward, which is all about connectivity, north, south, east and west to the promenade. And even as we've talked about to a future, potential future crossing uh, over France Avenue, or under France Avenue, through France Avenue, however it might happen, uh, over to the sites on the west side of it. Uh, again, this, this focus and importance of pedestrian, uh, putting the pedestrian first. Infrastructure resulting functional civic spaces. Transportation, that's not car focused. Again, we're pushing all the parking into the buildings, essentially eliminating surface parking and providing ample bike parking across the site. Variety of use of architectural design, healthy green design. We've talked about sustainability guidelines in the city that we're going to meet, including some innovative techniques such as uh, putting solar panels on the roofs. And finally, expanding the park and public space, which uh, hopefully is evident in all the green imageries, uh, imagery we've put forward. One of the points we really talked at, at length was in that lower right image. That's essentially that southwest corner looking east towards the promenade. And really, this is one of the great opportunities we're creating on, on behalf of the city through the development of the site, of really creating a dynamic access point that's visible from France, that guides you back into this really wonderful asset of the city, which is the promenade in the Central Lakes District. Centennial Lakes District. Uh, and so I think really many of these things uh, would be very challenging or not possible without the flexibility we're asking for uh, through the PUD process. So I think with that, uh, we can wrap with the presentation. Asking you to memorize the long list of things on the left. It's just uh, reminders for us of all the things we're prepared to talk about should you have questions on them. I think we'll actually jump back uh, and leave the screen on the overall site plan with a little extra context on there. And then open it up for Q and A or comments, and if you want to take it from here.
Great, thank you very much for that presentation. So um, before we go to the public hearing, we have an opportunity for us to ask questions. So this is not a commentary time, this is a question time. So anyone who has questions for the uh, okay?
Sure, there, and Patrick, you can help me too, but I know there, there's, there's one planned on the promenade. Saw that in the renderings. That would be that southeast building. Can you see my, where I'm pointing?
Mm-hmm.
So that would be a primary one. And then on the northwest building, I've talked about it as commercial. I don't know if that is for sure a restaurant or not, maybe you can...
So the two west buildings along France on the first floor, both include commercial space. Our target is to recruit restaurants to be in those spaces. They could be one user, they could be split into two. So conceivably, you could have two restaurants in each of those west buildings along France. It could be one restaurant, depending on what demand we get from the marketplace. Maybe it's a different type of commercial use. Um, but as far as like specifically an only restaurant and the main target, that southeast building, we very much are specifically targeting a restaurant.
And tell me a little bit more about the office space. You talked a bit about it, but it's mostly oriented towards France?
All of the, all of the office space included in this project is located within the west two buildings. Um, I don't know, I don't have it memorized, but I believe the first, call it the first third or uh, forty percent of that southwest building is going to be commercial office. So floors one through five, two through four, thank you, correction on that. And then the uh, northwest building, the, the second floor is programmed to have office. Uh, that northwest building, um, there was a comment made earlier, and maybe there's an opportunity for me to address your comment and then respond to another. Um, the northwest building very much is meant to be flexible. Uh, we do desire to have more office than just one floor of office on the second floor. Um, however, we're trying to be mindful of uh, the size and scale of this project and the lift that it takes to get it through a closing and making sure that we can confidently get through this process, get it through a closing and not have one single building drag down the entire project if we go full spec on office. We do have a lot of interest in office, but right now what you... We do have a lot of interest in office, but right now what you see before you right now is first floor retailer with that fronting uh, commercial along France that could be restaurants, second floor office with apartments above. So the floors three through seven are apartments. If we get office interest and Lisa sign, we will try to swap out floors of residential to office. If there's a material change to that makeup of that building, we acknowledge you'd have to come back for an amendment to the PUD. Um, but that's the intent answering the question about office and why we're programming the northwest building where that we are.
And I'm gonna let you know the reason I'm asking the question because for me, the activated street room is not just a place for people to walk through, but for people to interact with the building. And um, and a lot of, a lot of that street is faced with residences, which are private. Um, so I was starting to feel that the street was becoming more private than your promenade was starting to become more private than than public. I I get that it's active and it's meandering or it's you can move through there and um, it's meandering and there's good things to look at. But I want people to be drawn through there. By knowing that they can go to a maker's place or an office or their dental office or whatever it is, that they can do a couple of things on their way between um, France and and so, so that was my question. I suppose about the office and the residence because the residence, the restaurant is more oriented towards the promenade. Um, and if that was even flipped, there'd be more um, um, more of that on the the walking street between the two and the same with the office of those offices both kind of cornered on that promenade. There's another way for people to feel like they were not walking into a private courtyard and into a place that they were supposed to be.
It's helpful at all. I have some color I can add to that, but if I defer to you here. Okay, um, yeah, great comment and well said. And part of the intention of the design here I should highlight. First floor uses are huge. There's a, there's a plan set or a plan sheet included in the submittal that we have. It's the landscaping plan. And one of the landscaping plans was actually annotated with first floor uses to give kind of a visual of, I believe, answering your question directly. Uh, if I may, the west two buildings, if you're in that center promenade and you're looking at the first floor of the west two buildings, there is zero uh, residential at the first two levels. It's actually even above on the southwest building. So when you're sending sitting in that center promenade between the two west buildings, it's all commercial, office, lobby type uses that spill into that area. We do have a kind of to be determined space that's located in the heart of that northwest building spilling into that center promenade that would be potentially like a publicly available either shared workspace or conference room or whatever that the public can rent, whether you're a part of this development or not, or obviously people within the development can rent and use as well. That bubble that you see on the west side of the site, the green large yard area is a programmable turf area that we intend to use for programming for all the users on this site. We can make available to the city and the public as well. But that's more of a higher durability green turf area. So if we want to do programming, music, uh, they're, we're gonna have restaurants that straddle that. So the restaurants that are located in that commercial space that I mentioned, that's fronting France on the west side of the two west buildings, it actually kind of tucks into the promenade. And the intention is if there's overflow seating or outdoor seating needed for those areas that they can spill into the promenade. Um, so uh, apologize that it didn't show up uh, in the presentation, but we very much want that west side to feel almost a hundred percent commercial on the first couple floors or even higher in that development area. On the east end, if I'm going all the way down to the far end of the promenade and the far east side on the southeast building where that um, uh, restaurant pad is located is on the corner. And the intention is that you know, the northeast corner, when you're on the center promenade, you're looking into the restaurant there as well. So it's not just an exclusive feature facing out to the east. It's also facing inward into the center promenade. So admittedly, you are correct. The east two buildings have a more residential feel with a little end cap of commercial feel. Uh, but the two west are a hundred percent commercial, or at least that's the intention on the on the ground level. And then the last thing I'd mentioned too is the two lobbies that are in the two apartment buildings are designed to feel commercial and they both face inward into that center promenade. So those two east buildings. Um, their uh, their lobby areas are located on the first floor at the main intersection. They're intended to spill kind of into that center promenade. So
Some of it is a proportion thing too. If we had shops lining this whole thing, there's a chance they might be empty shops, which that's what we don't want. So.
No, and I understand that. I um, I was ever walk um Centennial last week with my cousins who stayed at the Residence Inn above in Borough. And love walking around the area and ended up going from the south side, felt comfortable walking through a commercial building to get to the park, walking to Penn Stripes and having lunch and going back. But I probably wouldn't go up and go through one of the residential areas because it's not my area. Um, so that's where um that came from. And um, I was gonna ask you a question about the parking again. Um, how much public parking? How much is that flexible or what were you thinking?
The first floor of all four buildings were intending to be generally available for public use. Um, in kind of in the spirit of what we've mentioned, like we want this to be a walkable welcoming place, not just for our project, but for anybody coming to this area from up from that doesn't live there or doesn't uh, work there. Um, if you're gonna, if you're gonna show up at this development and you see a public parking sign on one building, but you want to get to the restaurants in the other building. We're trying to not have a situation where someone needs to know where their assigned parking is as a public, is someone from the public. We think that's too confusing to result in an unsuccessful development. So the intention is first floor of every single building and the the floor plans are included here includes some form of structured parking. Um, that structured parking is generally available. Uh, and we've done parking counts to make sure that we we can hit the amount of parking that restaurants would need so we can be successful with restaurants. But obviously there's going to be peaks and drops and shared parking across all four of these sites. And that's what we envision. We envision almost like a first floor shared parking strategy across the entire development. And that could be for people that want to even park here and go use the promenade or Centennial Lakes.
Yeah. Sorry, just to follow up, there's two floors of underground parking under each building, but then you enter at ground level and that's going to be public. And then the, there will be additional levels above and then the two below that will be used and I guess signed for the residents of that building or the office tenants. So that's the plan?
Yep. So every single building on this project has two floors of below ground parking. Um, and then uh, all the buildings have an aggregate level of some form of parking. Obviously it can't all be parking because we have these active uses. So we're trying to straddle that or walk the line there. And then some of the buildings have one story on the second or even the southwest building has multiple stories. Um, the first floor is meant to be the public floor and everything else will have some sort of secure or assignments uh, above or below first floor.
So two more questions. I mean, that first floor being public parking, that is another way to bring people into the site and make that street feel like their own. So um, I'm going to consider that a positive thing. And then so the southwest building is the owner occupied building condominiums. Um, the, all the rest would be rent rental units. So those walkouts, would you, they're rental units, would you um, allow someone like a, say an artist to do, have a, have a live work space and bring public in to buy, you know, jewelry or pottery or whatever it is, would you allow? I mean, that's another way to make that an active street. I'm just throwing it out there, you know, to say yes.
True. Yes, uh, great comment. And actually on a handful of projects we're working on right now across the Twin Cities, we're looking at that type of approach for the first floor, the two story walkout units. Um, if there is desire from this board and from the council, we would be happy to consider that for some of the units on this project. It's not programmed at this point, but if there is kind of consensus direction on that, we would, we would welcome at least adding a couple of units or swapping out a couple to have that flexibility.
Thank you.
Um, can you remind me if we're, if there's a TIF request in this project? There is. Okay. What for? Can you address why, what the need and where that money will be going? Because my understanding, at least as far as height goes, is that as I read through this, it was specified that additional height was needed to make up for fact that you need more market unit rate, market unit, market rate units because you have affordable housing in there, right? So we're asking for additional height and we're asking for TIF funding on top of that. So just walk me through that decision and that ask a little bit.
As far as height goes, I'm not personally aware of a connection between any height request and a TIF request. Uh, TIF, um, it's gonna, it's connected to a few things. Uh, heavy structured parking, structured parking's a large cost and with almost no surface parking here and almost a hundred percent structured, that's a abnormal cost for a developer. Um, secondly, affordable housing is a huge component. That's, that's a very big item and um, we'll be submitting a formal application to the city and detail everything, of course, uh, in dollars. Um, but that's a large item and it goes, you know, goes on through the life of the TIF district. So twenty five years of affordable. I think just, we just, you know, I don't want to throw out numbers in a public uh, forum here, but it's significant. It means many, 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 many millions of dollars impact to cash flow on a project like this. Um, so that's a big piece. Obviously, there's a lot of public realm here. So a little bit enhanced level of uh, landscape, architecture. Normally we do on a normal project, so we have an elevated public realm. Um, those are the big three. Uh, there's little details, you know, like we're doing solar on some of the buildings. Um, obviously we're going to meet the sustainability code. Um, we are proud of the architecture and layout of the site and and configuring things based on the connection across France, but that's created some uh, more expensive building styles. Uh, it, the use of more of concrete than we, than we normally prefer to use. So just a little bit of everything, but I affordable housing is a huge component of that.
Huge component of the TIF ask, right? We all, and so what I'm getting at is we also, we also need the additional height, right? Again, so you're just trying to generate additional revenue. That's what you're saying. I mean, because what I'm trying to hit on is feedback from the community that I've, that I've seen so far about the height and the concern about the height here. Um, especially the eleven story building and how it impacts our one neighborhood across. And so I, it just is, it just strikes me as odd as in terms of asking for additional height and TIF funding. I understand that there is a lot of, we've asked for a lot from this PUD, right? We've asked for a restaurant, we've asked for, you know, additional landscaping, et cetera. I can agree with that, but I would have to dive into the numbers a little bit more to see how that math works out and whatnot. Um, but I'll, I'll continue on the height aspect a little bit. Do we, have we looked at um, how the height will impact the promenade in terms of shading, in terms of wind? Has there any been like any kind of study or I guess any analysis in that regard? Because I know that was another concern raised by our residents on Better Together. How will, you know, this area be shaded and will it impact the promenade too much and whatnot with the height you have?
We have completed a shadow study that's available and included in our submittal. I think we can pull that up if we do want to get into that. Um, and that was part of a lot of the strategy that has gotten in the project and um, and then on uh, well, maybe we'll start there and before I go down like that, if you guys have that available. Yes, well, on height, I can just quickly mention before you do this. Uh, obviously we have not, we have not received like any like formal motions or directions. So the comments I'm going to say are just anecdotal feedback that we received through the process to date. Um, we actually had higher buildings. Uh, both buildings were higher at one point. Um, and we went, I think we went back through some of the boards and commissions even a couple of times. And um, this is my anecdotal feedback was that it was mentioned several times that height isn't the concern. In fact, we recommend pushing height. Uh, that's not the main concern that the city has. So um, we tried to balance uh, knowing the code and the requirements with the feedback we received. So we kind of split it down the middle. We dropped one building down to comply. We actually reduced one story from the other building and tried to find a compromise in the middle. And so that's why we landed at the strategy that we did. But shadow study, if you guys want to.
As far as shadow study goes, it probably is more helpful to see it by hour. Um, but that shadowing the promenade, that obviously the taller building is far to the west. So it would be the buildings along the the promenade that um, would impact that more. Which were, were set back a good amount. I was, I was walking it today and uh, the building to the north um, is a little closer. So it's setting it back. I think we'll feel, feel better there. And doing the tiering that we're doing a little bit of. And as far as wind goes, I'm not an expert, but got, right now, it, I was there today, it was windy. It's a surface parking lot. There's nothing to block the wind. As soon as you have more buildings and trees, that obviously helps.
Yeah. No, I appreciate you pulling this up, right? So what I was trying to get at, you know, is my own questions. And then again, hitting on the feedback from Better Together and making sure that we address that. And um, this is a good illustration. Looks like your pool will get a little shade in the late afternoon in the summer. Okay, um, after height, traffic is the next thing I wanted to ask about. Uh, so if you could go back to your high level map of the site, if you would. Yeah, okay. So looking at, so you know, kind of hit on what I asked about earlier when Commissioner, when uh, Kerry was up here. So around the north and south areas and traffic in that regard. So to the north, you can't really see on this map, but there's a grade there, right? Going into that driveway and you have parking spots at an angle. So people are going to have to back up against grade, right? They're gonna have to back up downhill in order to get out of that. Um, it could be a little, that could be a little tricky. Um, you have, so it looks like just, it's only pedestrian access on that, on that road to the south, right? So that plaza, that's not, there's not meant to be vehicle traffic there at all. I mean, the way it was named, I think was a little funny in terms of but you, all, all traffic going through the south has to go through that one outlet road, right? There's no like, there will be no confusion that people can drive over there for any reason. That plaza area, just because it was named on the one map that staff showed, it was like convertible plaza or some regard or I can't remember what it is.
Where my cursor is?
No, straight, keep going south.
Oh, here.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. So that, that's not intended to be vehicle traffic at any point. Right? Okay. It just was a little odd, but ninety nine percent sure, but I wanted that one percent.
Sorry, I still, I want to make sure you get the public record correct. Are we talking about that on the south side?
Yes, yep.
I should set that correct then. Um, so uh, for, you know, just putting the facts out there, the, the, the property owner to the south has an easement, an access easement over that area. It is our preference and desire to eliminate that access point and have it a hundred percent green, green and just be trail. However, we are required to continue to provide them access. So what we're trying to do, like so many things, trying to find a middle ground. And so still provide the access that they are entitled to, but convert it to a plaza style access to um, not to uh, not encourage average and common use uh, through that area only as needed for trucks. Uh, because that's the primary use that they need it for is when they have deliveries or trucks.
Okay, so I wasn't crazy. I was like, that is, there is going to be traffic over there. The way that was named, it was an access point of some sort or something. Okay. All right. Yeah, I mean, total traffic flow through the area is a bit, like I said, I think it's a bit tricky. Um, again, north with that grade change and how, and you have the fact you can only turn right out of there. Um, the four way intersection in the south, and then you, you kind of have that median, which if somebody wants to turn left into the property of the south, which I believe is what the container store and everything else, then they kind of have to, it's kind of an odd angle, but I mean, I, I understand why you did what you did. I think there could be some improvement, but I know you're a little handcuffed by the promenade stuff. I would just encourage as we build this, right? To try to make this as safe as for our pedestrians as possible in terms of signage, in terms of narrowing stuff down, right? I, I do worry about traffic coming and going like um, Commissioner Padilla said, if Like Commissioner Padilla said, if you have to go and turn, take a left, you're going to, everybody's going to go, try to go south, right? And you might have people going through quite frequently. Or maybe if they go out of lunds and they want to take a left, right? You have a lot of traffic flowing that way. So I thought they would try to manage that effectively. Trying to think of other questions. I think that's, that's it for, for this moment. I might get spurred by other commissioners, but thank you.
Questions? Oh, sure.
Can you go back maybe to the fly-through or maybe you can do it here? I'm a little bit confused and I know we don't have restaurants locked down, so concepts aren't fully maybe fleshed out. But where trash is going to be, where, you know, grease traps, back-of-the-house food deliveries are going to be, you have 500 something units of apartments. You know, you're going to have 25% turnover a year. So you're going to have a bunch of move-ins and move, like I just, I'm, I'm struggling a little bit with the logistics for all the uses. And wondering if you could talk through that.
For reference purposes only, we did create a couple of separate plan sheets after dialogue with staff on these points for trash hauling, drop-off, pickup, move-in, big trucks, fire access, emergency access. So just for reference purposes. The trash will be collected 100% inside the parking garages. We will have shafts for trash to come from the upper floors. Trash will be carted out from the first floor of every project out to the, or all four buildings out to that center street. And we do have a, a plan that shows the size of a garbage truck coming to pick those up and then being stacked. So that's available as well. As far as grease, shafting, smoke smells from restaurants, our wonderful architectural team will be including the proper pre-programmed shafts running vertically through the buildings, through the roof of each building to allow for tenant build-outs and tenant improvements in the future when those exact restaurants are secured. That's a semi-common practice because you don't know exactly what's needed right now before we build. So we have to pre-program a large-size shaft that runs all the way up to the roof. So that's, I think that's the plan on this project as well.
How about resident move-ins, move-outs? Food delivery, I, I saw, yeah, you had the, the trucks, but then I wasn't sure how to understand how those truck sizes would be functioning in this space.
So essentially, this diagram is demonstrating the range of vehicles that can fit inside each of the garages. So each of the eastern residential buildings and, and northeast building can essentially allow a standard U-Haul-style truck up to X size. And there's a huge range of sizes in, in each of those things as well. So what we've done is allocate space on the main street to cone off for any large vehicles that would have to pull over and drop those off. And then in, basically, provide a route into the elevators through the, through the garage system of the building from that point.
Right, so all those residents, if they hire a moving company, they're going to have a 20-foot truck for your one- or two-bedroom luxury apartment in the different build. I just, I'm, that through-street is functioning for a lot of traffic, for people coming in and out, a lot of moving in and out, and a lot of commercial vehicles for the uses. And I'm concerned about it bifurcating that promenade the way, I mean, I just, it feels like a lot in a little space. Yeah?
Yeah, there's a lot going on. I mean, honestly, it's, I mean, it is. And it's one of the, it's, you know, Patrick spoke about trying to strike balance between all of this, right? It's this, it's trying to find the sweet spot between making this about pedestrians first and not about vehicles everywhere. And so as we limit the number of roads in and around this, trying to pinch those zones down into where these things happen, it, it does get limiting of where we can, where we can achieve that.
For sure, and, and I'm going to ask probably an unpopular question. Is it the height that's the limiting factor? If you went taller, does that give you more space on the ground floor to play with? I mean, right, you have to make the numbers work and so you have to have a certain amount of square footage. And I just, I, I don't want the pedestrian experience for the whole project to be sacrificed for logistics that have to happen for these buildings to operate because we're worried about one or two stories. Like, I feel, to me, sorry, that cuts your nose off to spite your face. Because if that becomes a really unpleasant place to be, then that I think will ruin a lot of the pedestrian experience. I feel like you don't have that at Market Street and, and that development, right? Because you don't have cars going through there, you don't have that in other parts. But if you're going to have a lot of cars going through, both from traffic of the users and all the other vehicles, I, I just worry that it's all going to get compromised. And so I know we have a lot of restrictions and, and conditions because this is a very important project. But if there is one that is particularly driving this design, I would be interested in understanding that from your perspective.
It's one that you probably can't control. It's the building code. So we're essentially, we've maxed out the height for the building types that we can do right down to essentially the last six inches that we can squeeze out of it. We would, we would love to push that a little bit if we could, to give a little more flexibility. But we've done that step already, I guess, is the way of saying it, to get to where we've, we have. The grade's a little bit better on the southern half of the site. So it all works a little bit better in that southeastern building. And there's still some left, some work left to do with grading plans and finalizing things to continue to look for those opportunities.
Can I follow up on that? So most of the rental units will probably be in U-Hauls or trucks if it can get into the garage, right? Because it's 592 apartments. And if the apartments are a year-to-year lease, I mean, I don't know what turnover is going to be like, but that could get kind of busy. So limiting those larger trucks for the two-bedroom luxury condominiums, which may or may not be purchased later on, all-inclusive. You know, at some point, people just sell all their furniture with their unit. Have you thought about that, thought through those?
I don't know. Kind of adding some detail even to this plan, and it may, or may not answer your question directly, but just for clarification. So all those buildings can handle a van, pickup trucks, small move-in vehicle, moving box truck. Every one of them can, the southwest building can handle even larger vehicles because it has a higher ceiling. So there will be a percent of move-ins that will be taken care of outside of public view. What we're trying to show on this plan is the stuff that doesn't fit. So like, you brought up a good point, I mean, some people will be bringing very large vehicles for moving. We're showing three spots here in those parallel stalls for three move-in trucks. We intend that entire north-south road, those parallel stalls, to all be essentially available for reservation. So if we know it's the start of the month or there's move-in scheduled, we'll, we'll, you know, put a sock over the, the stall and, and make sure that it's not, you know, someone's not going to park in there. So in theory, what we're showing here is three large trucks. You could probably accommodate six large trucks and then obviously everything inside of the buildings. That doesn't answer your question directly, but I just, there's a little bit more capacity than maybe shows up immediately first glance on this plan. But it's a point well taken and something that, you know, admittedly, that's one of the, the struggles with a very complex mixed-use development with high density. It's just, it's part of the process, so.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I guess I was just wondering, so for requesting a variance on, yeah, I don't have it pulled up, but on the ground-level transparency, what's the practical difficulty of not getting to that 75% number on the ground level?
I can, I can speak to that first off. So I, I, to me, when you look at a lot of transparency, it means restaurant, office, really active uses. And so there's a wayfinding and a clarity aspect to that, which, you know, when we spun through, you could see at the, at the lobby, at the restaurant, even more than 75%. When you get to a unit, you know, obviously, if you live in a high-rise and you're up 200 feet, all glass is great. There's nobody's looking in at you. But if you live at grade and you have 75% transparency, you're, you're just going to pull your blinds all the time. And so to, to your point, Commissioner Felt, to me, having that feel comfortable as you're walking through is to have a little more opacity. So you're not in your bedroom feeling like you have to close your blinds or, you know, and you're at the dining table, feeling like everyone's looking in at you. Because that, that can also create that situation where you don't want to walk through there and you don't want to live there. So that, that's a, that's a, it's a good question. And that's a, one of the main reasons is comfort, but also clarity of use also. So that where there is a restaurant, you know, that's a restaurant because you, you can see that through the, through the design.
Awesome, thank you.
Thanks for your presentation. Nice to see you gentlemen again. Let's see, starting with the parking. Currently, I don't know whether or not you're aware, but the parking lot in front of the Macy's site fills up, like, it's full, it's far fuller when Macy's is closed than when it's open with people who are coming to go to the park. So you basically, I'm, I'm, I think I heard you say that the parking is for people who live there and are coming to the retail establishments, not for people who are going to the park?
Public parking on the first floor.
Okay, so that's, the entire public is welcome regardless. Residents is on the first floor. You're not concerned at all about noise or safety or security?
I'd be glad to speak to that. Part of it is, well, it's the old eyes-on-the-street saying, which we like to say a lot. But part, we, we've been very specific in our design to have a little bit of landscape between and a little bit of height difference so that your stoop might be, they're, they vary, but around two, three feet off the ground. So that separation in elevation and that landscaping buffer is a nice way to make that feel like you can live on it and you can also walk by it and feel safe. And, you know, there's people with dogs, love them, they can walk right out. And so there's at least, there's a good amount of people who they prefer that. Obviously, there will be some people who, that, that's not for them, but then they'll live a little higher. But there are a good amount of people that really do prefer that condition.
And you brought up dogs. So you've got a dog park up by the northeast corner. And you mentioned that that is a, will be a public dog park, it will not just be for the residents. And you're aware that in addition to however many dogs owned by the residents, there are hundreds of people that walk their dogs by there every single day. And you're prepared for that from your amenity-wise perspective. Okay, great. Where are the playgrounds?
Where the, there is not a playground program down this site.
Okay, and the, are going to be, I'm sorry, I don't think we talked about how many bedrooms we're going to see in all these, in these different buildings. Two bedrooms, three bedrooms?
The, I can speak on behalf of the, every building except the southwest building will have a mix of studios, ones, twos, and threes. The two east buildings will also include two-story townhome lockouts.
Okay, and so you are anticipating then families with children, I assume, if there's three bedrooms?
As far as the rental, the three buildings that I mentioned, so not the southwest building, where the, that's those of the for-sale product, the rentals, the market has really evolved over time and it is a very wide variety of people that are renters now. It's really opened up. It used to be slightly dominated by some classic demographics, but it's, so yes, families would be part of that. There would be some families. It just triggered a memory in my mind at the start of this presentation. I just want to clarify, at least my understanding, feel free to tell me if I'm ob based, anybody. I believe this is actually the Richfield School District. There's a.
I clarified that earlier.
Oh, sorry.
Kerry, and he said it was Edina.
I'll double-check that.
It's Richfield.
It's Richfield.
That's.
Thank you for clarifying that. What kind of input did you get from neighbors when you met with them initially?
100% resounding support. I'm teasing, no, we, you know, it was, it was, you know, we did two neighborhood meetings. One was well-attended, one frankly was very lightly attended. I can't remember, we almost had, it was either one person or it was very lightly attended. The feedback at those two meetings, especially the first one, I would say, I, you know, I would say down the middle, you know, we received some comments of people, you know, that had opinions about density, a lot of the stuff you're hearing here tonight. We had some people excited about a potential enhancement to the public realm. And as time went on and there was more discussion about a connection across France avenue excitement about that. So it was a balance.
We heard a lot of restaurants.
Desire for restaurants, desire for public parking, all the positives that you're aware of. We tried to, things that people were interested in, wanted, we tried to incorporate. So that's a lot of the things we've highlighted tonight. But where there's some people opposed, certainly through that process.
You mentioned that you were going to put in solar panels. How much energy do you anticipate will be produced by those solar panels?
We have not sized the systems yet. One thing that we're weighing right now, which is fluid, is you may be aware, there's tariffs going back and forth between two large powerhouse countries right now. And solar panels are in the middle of that discussion. And depending on when we actually place an order and procure, the cost of solar panels will vastly differ. So we will do some solar panel array, but depending on the economics, we don't know what size it'll be. Typically, what we do is we try to size it to meet the house meter. So all of the kind of amenity areas, hallways, the solar panel array would be sized to meet that demand.
All the common spaces.
But in, in this scenario, because of the uncertainty of what's going to unfold over the next 18 months, hard to commit to the exact size right now.
And all bicycles will need to be parked underground?
Yep, we can achieve that. For, for private residences, we will still provide public bicycle parking as well at grade out of convenience for the, for visiting the site.
So the rendering looks like it has bikes and pedestrians together. I don't know if you're planning on separating that. On the promenade, they are separated, but I don't see a separation on your east-west street in the middle. Is that?
Correct, we, we have not envisioned a separate bike lane.
And I think that, that the idea is pedestrian-first. Sometimes, sometimes bikes, I, I have been a biker, I am a biker. Sometimes you go too fast and, and irritating the pedestrians. But I feel like that as pedestrian-first gives the idea that, hey, you're not supposed to bike fast through here.
One of the great opportunities of this site, of course, is the Nine Mile Creek District path. So there's still a route that flanks specifically for bikes along the south side of the site. So I guess we, we anticipate bikes using that more than the, the center area, just by the convenience factor of it.
In one of your documents, I believe it's this north-south street in the middle here is referred to as a secondary new local street. And it's stated as a service corridor, which certainly goes to the point earlier made about moving and trash and things like that. certainly goes to the point earlier made about moving and trash and things like that. So I'm wondering if it really does qualify as a public corridor, or, you know, or what that does to the street room concept? Because, I mean, it does sound like it would be used a lot for utility vehicles, moving, things like that, and there's this big pedestrian crossing in the middle. So could you talk, could you address that, please?
Yeah, I can.
A few things, yeah, go ahead. Why don't you start, Patrick?
You first, Chris. No, I'll go. I mean, you're, I mean, you're right, it's, you know, mixed-use developments, there's a lot of things going on here, and it's not, you know, it's not a car-first development, but that north-south road is the, you know, that is the, you can see even visually here, asphalt pavement, that is the vehicular corridor. As far as parking from the public, people visiting the site, the intent is, as we outlined, is the first floor of all the four buildings would be that public parking option for the public coming into the site. There are some service stalls on the north side of that northwest building. The intention is that if there is utility, things happening, there is move-ins, that we've given them a spot, those parallel stalls, and we can mark them off and get them off that road to stop, not block traffic. We've intentionally done that, but obviously, you know, it's going to be dense and there's going to be a lot going on, and, you know, there's going to be competing forces there, for sure.
Okay, and last thing I want to talk about is the southwest building. So this is going to be 49 senior condos, correct?
Correct.
And what makes it a senior condo?
So it'll have some age qualifications to it, so it'll be kind of a 55-plus condition. There will be a certain portion of those units that we would build in some flexibility, say 20% of the ownership could be below or younger than that 55 age qualification. We haven't landed on exactly what that threshold would be, but there would be some built-in accommodation where it's not 100% kind of the empty nester profile, but it will be kind of marketed towards that buyer.
And does that mean there are any particular kind of senior amenities that come with those units?
There are specific amenities for that residential space, similar to what you'd see in more of the market-rate apartments, but there's no services contemplated within that building, so there wouldn't be...
Like wider doors and things like that?
Right, we would end up having probably three-foot standard openings throughout every home or unit within that particular building, but again, to kind of your question, and so I'm very clear, there would be no active kind of aging services allowed or rooms specifically for that, aside from the built-in ability, if somebody was doing recuperative care, we have more of a wellness studio contemplated as part of our amenities, that that could have, you know, machines that would accommodate somebody going through just general life recuperative care.
And it looked, from one of the drawings, I didn't see it in the text, but that are all of the units in the southwest building, residential units facing north? Or is that just, I just, it looked like that's where the balconies were?
Yeah, so the residential portion of that building has more of a U shape with the opening towards the south, so that is double-lined corridors along that U shape, so not all units face north, some do face south.
But are the balconies only facing north?
No, there are some balconies that face south as well. There's two fairly prominent, larger balconies that come up on the renderings that are southward-facing, and then there are also more of visually-integrated balconies on kind of the internal corridor units.
And as far as, so 10% of that population is going to be for low-income, which would be for low-income seniors?
It would be for owners that meet the qualifications at 80% AMI.
80% AMI.
Correct.
So, and how does that manifest itself in terms of the price? Is it lower price? Is it lower, is it lower borrowing rate? Is it extended term?
So it'd end up just relating to the purchase or that sale price of those units, making sure that those are able to be afforded by people that meet that 80% AMI. So we will have not only the age qualification for people that live in that building, but for those specific five units that have been identified, there would also be an income qualification that corresponds with meeting that AMI threshold.
And then the price is affected, only the price?
Correct.
Okay, thanks. Can you give us your name?
Yes, sorry. Ben Landhouser Lifestyle Communities, we're at 4938 Lincoln Drive, Edina, Minnesota.
All right, thank you very much for your presentation and all your answers today. Just a few more, I think, I think, just a few. So the diagonal curb parking on the north, why do we need that?
The parking on the north, it's really to aid the success of restaurants. It doesn't have to be there, but we want to give the best fighting chance of having success with restaurants, and that's why it's there. It's almost like teaser parking for restaurant users.
Do you really need teaser parking?
Do we need it? You know, it's not an answer that, I personally don't need it. Based on discussions with brokers and prospect tenants that have looked at the site, it's something they recommend. But is it needed? I can't answer that directly.
Yeah, no, I think I understand your answer, it's just frustrating. Then on the surface parking right up-down, right in the middle, I understand what you're saying about service vehicles, occasional moving trucks, what have you, you don't know what large vehicle may show up on any given day, for what purpose, but all the pictures we see here have cars parked there, and I just, for the life of me, can't figure out why you need to park cars there.
Yeah, those would be a few parallel stalls, just for quick coming and going, like Uber drop-off, or, I mean, it could be, I guess, I don't know if they'd be signed or not.
I get that. It seemed, it sounds, your answer just sounded kind of cars-first to me, and, and I'm not a developer, I don't have to worry about the same things you do, but...
I sympathize with you on the angled parking also, the, well, the place we are in time is that people are used to big surface parking lots in front of buildings, and it's so convenient and easy, and we're trying to balance and have a tiny bit of that for a lot of people, that that's what is very normal.
Yeah, so, so I'll grant you the teaser parking on the north, but the street, the curb parking in the middle there, it doesn't seem like it's really all that close to any of your restaurants. I'm thinking about it more from the perspective of somebody who's a pedestrian crossing the street there, on your beautiful promenade that goes right down the middle of your property. And I'm going to the east, and I'm going eastward from the buildings on the left, and when I turn left, when I look left, I see parked cars, when I look interfering with my view of oncoming cars, when I look right, I see parked cars interviewing with my view of oncoming parked cars. And I've got 1,349 off-street parking spots in the facility, 20% more than Edina recommends or requires, and Edina's usually pretty expansive, 30% more than the consultant recommends, and I'm still parking cars on the middle of this beautiful place. I just can't believe it has to be that way.
I think it's a fair comment. I think something that, as an overall development team, we've continued to kind of wrestle with, what are those uses? And I think, to some of the questions that were asked earlier about, you know, the logistical pieces that are necessary to support kind of the buildings that are being proposed, we haven't landed on exactly what that formula is, but I think more recent conversations as we develop some of those logistical exhibits that are in your packet are telling us, more than likely, those are short-term stays for the Amazon, FedEx, USPS, some of those things, that they're probably not utilized often, but they are necessary to be successful for the development. And if we do need some of those on-street parking for the short-term quick grab-in, I forgot something, without going into the parking ramp, that's also an accommodation that they afford. But I don't know that you're going to hear from us today, with where we are in this process, that we haven't exactly figured out exactly how many of those spaces are necessary, and if they should be more identified as loading zone locations, parking locations, or the like.
Fair enough, thank you for the answer. My concern is, wherever you make a space for a car, there's going to be a car, especially in as dense a place as this, and we like density, but when you make it home for a car, this car's going to live there. If I was a renter in your building, would I pay extra, or I pay for a parking spot in addition to the rent on my apartment, or is it all rolled together?
It's an extra charge.
Okay, so those are going to be filled up by residents, if you allow, because you're going to say, I don't want to pay them 100 bucks a month to park my car in the garage, I'm going to park there where the nice spots are. So that's more pressure on that real estate, on that beautiful area in the middle. Last question on that, can you raise that pedestrian walkway going east-west when it crosses that road in the middle?
That is the intention of the design right now.
Is it? Fantastic, thank you. I assume, you spend a very short amount of time explaining why you need so many off-street spots compared to our requirement and compared to the consultant?
Yeah, I can respond to that. So first, appreciate the feedback we've heard from WSB City Standards, obviously, there's many different viewpoints on what the appropriate amount of parking is and what's needed. Admittedly, we're looking at the parking here, too, and wondering if we can ratchet it back a little bit, so we're actually going through that process right now to see if we can take out more. So I want you to know that we're on the same page, if we can reduce more parking, we want to. We came up with the parking plan based on parking ratios or industry standards, on the multifamily side of things, that's something that Enplay is really familiar with, based on other projects, on the retail side of things, we've been relying on experts, and admittedly, we've been sizing the parking for a high-demand restaurant. High-demand restaurants have like, you know, 10 to 1 or plus, 10 to 1,000 square feet parking requirements, so as we kind of fine-tune this to Ben's point, and time goes on, we might, I think there's an opportunity to reduce parking, and just, I wanted to say, your point is well-taken on that center aisle, it's something that we wrestled with, with that parallel parking, and one thing we are contemplating is, do we just, is it just not parking? Is it just a, you know, marked-off staging area so there isn't confusion, so people aren't, you know, have the problem that you mentioned? So appreciate the comment, it's something we're still trying to program through.
Okay, thank you.
Just quick, wasn't there a design intent in here to be able to convert some of your parking stalls into usable space, right? That's, okay.
Okay, so most of my questions were answered by my fellow commissioners, but getting back to the north-south street for a second, are there no boulevards between this sidewalk and the street there? Is it just the curb up against the sidewalk? And how wide is the sidewalk?
If I may, the, so the north-to-south road there is a 60-foot-wide corridor, and I know that there is some level of guidance of why we did that, I'm not going to try to take the stab at the guideline, but we did, it was a 60-foot-wide corridor, and we struggled with, do we try to get green on both sides of this corridor and have a heavy pedestrian corridor on both sides, have some sort of staging drop-off area, and then also two lanes of traffic? We're just running out of room, so we had to make decisions. So the strategy right now is the east side of that north-to-south corridor will have vegetation and green, so it's not a full boulevard, but there will be green added, some trees, and some breaking up of the sidewalk. There will be a north-to-south sidewalk on both sides of the road. Admittedly, the one on the east side will be more attractive and welcoming, a little wider, the one on the west side will be a little bit more functional, a little bit less breathing room.
Okay, thank you. And the promenade, just go further on that, that's not going to be a woundorf, right? There's not going to be like trucks parked on there for deliveries or anything like that?
Great comment and worth highlighting, so the answer's no to the direct answer. The east-to-west promenade between the two east buildings is designed as an emergency fire access lane. There's an access or turning movement plan included in our plan set for reference, but it can accommodate a fire apparatus. There's a disguised hammerhead at the end of that, along the promenade, so we're trying to balance public safety requirements along the east side there to the west, it's going to, there's, the design includes essentially a turnaround, so you could, and I don't know how to describe the standards without pulling it up and showing you, but almost like a, using a small leg of the west side of the promenade as a turn-in and then back-out moment for a fire apparatus, and then also, fire apparatus could park there, set up and run a ladder to the north-or-south building as well. One of the challenges we're running into is there's underground parking located between those two buildings, so the further we run a fire apparatus, the more structure we have to add to the below-ground parking, and so we're trying to balance that. And then what I didn't mention before, police cars, ambulances, urgent pickup and drop-offs is another thing that we're trying to balance here with kind of all this discussion, and where do they go, and especially if someone doesn't understand the site, and there's an emergency or something really urgent.
The intent is only special circumstances go onto that east-west promenade.
There's no, there's no Amazon Prime truck coming in there.
Right, that was a concern. That's very good to hear. I mean, I don't think anyone cares about fire trucks coming on there, that's a good Question answered, question answered. So, so about the, you answered the question about the 75% transparency, and that makes a lot of sense in areas where there's housing, I mean, that totally makes sense, right? Nobody wants a glass wall there. But there are areas that, like there's art or something, where, you know, it's like covering up a wall that's probably for parking or something. Have any of those areas, especially if we're trying to get you to reduce parking, are any of those areas, I mean, as you can reclaim parking space, the ideal space for us would be publicly visible space, you know, and so if, if there's any of those, if you've thought about any of that, it'd be good to keep those kind of spaces most accessible, is what I'm getting at. Let's see, same thing about the green walls on the south side, where it's like, you know, that's, it's really not great. And then on the north side, is that, are those supposed to be, on the north, sorry, the northwest building, are those balconies that we're seeing, or it looks like cars or something? What's...
Yeah, we're seeing from way up in the sky, so those would be balconies.
Those are balconies, okay.
Not that great.
Okay, that's it for my questions. So now we're going to...
I'm sorry, Lou, can I ask one more? I think this is for Director Teague, actually. Do you happen to know off the top of your head how tall the Bauer is and how tall the Weston is? Both of them? Good, thank you. That's it.
All right, so, let's see here. Need a motion to open the public hearing?
Sorry, what was?
We need a motion to open the public hearing?
Nope, you can just open it.
Okay.
It's just closing.
Okay, okay. First time, yeah. All right, we're going to open the public hearing, and we will now hear from residents who would like to provide testimony, individuals who want to provide input remotely. Are we still not remote?
We are not remote.
Okay, do I need to read this then, or?
You probably do not, because the people who are joining us remote are already on the line.
Okay.
Yep.
So, can they hear, they can't hear us, though? They can't hear them speak?
Yep, they can hear us.
Oh, they can, okay. All right, so I do want to read this then, right? Well, they're already on the phone call, I got you, all right, so skip the first paragraph. This shouldn't happen my first time. All right, so we don't need to worry about muting your speaker. Okay, please begin speaking by giving your name and address for the record, you will then have three minutes to speak. Remember, it is not necessary to provide testimony if you have already provided comments via voicemail or put it together at edina.org. Call in if you have new comments or information to bring forward. So, but first, we will have people in the audience, right, speak. Would anybody like to speak? You have three minutes to speak. Would anybody like to speak? You have three minutes to speak. State your name and address.
Patrick D. Wayne, 7220 York. Thank you, thank you for your service. You know, government by the people for the people. Like you said, the walk on the promenade in Centennial Lakes is extraordinary. It's really the goose that laid the golden egg. I've lived, my wife and I, for four years and love it. I walk at least 10,000 steps every day, so I know all of this quite well. The issue of wind, just want to correct something. Right now, there's very little wind where that is, because it's blocked by trees and bushes. Someone just mentioned the Bower. The Bower is a wind catastrophe. When it's 30, it feels like 10. When it's 10, it feels below zero. When it's below zero, even I don't walk past the Bower to get to the, to get to the other side. So my concern is eight stories just 34 feet from the promenade. I mean, that's basically a Vikings first down. That's not much space at all. And that there's going to be an east-west canyon that's going to run through there, which, like the Straits of Gibraltar or the Straits of Mackinac, is just going to create all kinds of wind. That's not going to be good for the pedestrians. Now, I'm pro-growth. I like a lot of what's been talked about here. But our development doesn't go up that high. The one adjacent to the Lunds-Bireleys, which was built recently, doesn't go up that high either. Neither of those developments cause a wind problem. And I'm also concerned about blocking out the light. So, love living here, I'm pro-growth, like all the thought that you all put into it. And I will welcome all of your residents as residents, because the more, the merrier. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Judy Buckle. I live at 806 Coventry Place in Adina. I also work in Centennial Lakes Park. And I do have a concern about the parking. The traffic expert, her comment, where I wrote it down exactly, was, well, there's already so much traffic already. And that's very true. And people come into where I work all the time and I continue, and I've worked there for over 10 years, talking about the increase in traffic. So I do think that's an issue. I also have a dog. When I first saw the map with the dog park, I worry about it, because somebody else mentioned there are a lot of dogs, there's a lot of buildings. It seems like there's potential for it being chaotic. Director Teague talked about one of the pluses is making a bigger biker, bigger bike path. But then, on the flip side, it seems like a contradiction to say, well, it's going to be very pedestrian-friendly, and a lot of those trails feed into the bike path. So I do worry about no additional bike path. Also, there was a request for less street-level height, less transparency, less setbacks. But then Mr. Willette says proportions really matter, and they do matter. Green space really matters. And just like, for me, a classic example is 51st and France. I mean, I just drive through there in my car, and I literally cringe, because there's no proportions and there's no setbacks. And I feel like walking from Centennial Lakes, which is a gorgeous park, beautiful proportions, and then boom, we get dumped into that corner of that southeast. There's very little setback, there's very little user-friendly. The restaurants on the other end, like if the restaurant was there, if there was a patio, I just, there seems like there could be more flow. It could be a better transition from a beautiful park versus giant edifice, which is how it feels from looking at the renderings. And then I only have a question, and maybe it's been addressed and I've just missed it. Regarding restaurant concepts, are we talking more Mr. Noodles, or Ciao Bella, or a combination? I guess that, okay, all right. But thanks for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, David Frankel, 4510 Lakeview, New York, Adina. One thing, it's probably a simple question for the architect, but I've read or not heard today anything about the Americans with Disabilities Act ADA, if this whole development is going to be ADA-compliant. Also, it's a little bit ironic, as you may know, the legacy back to this site is the Dayton brothers in Southdale. Dayton's not getting a nickel of public money when they build Southdale and this site. And on top of that, they donated the land for where currently Southdale Fairview Hospital resides. I don't see any need for this site to get to financing. It's a beautiful piece of land. Why is it being subsidized by taxpayer money? The other issue is, didn't see some type of rendering of this proposed pedestrian bridge over France Avenue. That's going to be a major structure. It's not a matter of a little bridge. Go over to the Nine Mile Creek Trail, crossing over Highway 100, and you can see a 5% grade of a ramp off of a bridge that has to be at least 15 feet to meet MINDAT standards. It's a long ramp on both sides. Cannot build stairs. Cannot build an elevator that was proposed for a crosstown pedestrian bridge. MINDAT will not go for it, and neither will Helenpin County. The other thing is, the Nine Mile Creek Trail, there's no rationale to why that trail needs to be widened. I bike that trail a couple of times a week. It is not very busy, unfortunately. There's no need to widen the trail. I'm just worried, the underlying reason to do this is so they can pull it out and use that during the construction process. That is not the reason to have that Nine Mile Creek Trail there. It should be used for residents as a quality-of-life trail, and I hope Nine Mile Creek does not allow it to be pulled out and widened. It's the way it is right now. The other issue is the crossing of France and Gallagher. There are creative ways to make that intersection not only safer for non-motorized, but to make it flow more frequently for cars. If you go down to Lake Bidet-Makaska, Richfield Road, and Berry Parkway, the Minneapolis Park Board has put in a four-way crossing for pedestrians and bikers. You press a button when you want to cross, and then it will, it will put the lights to red for that crossing. If it's only one crossing, only one light changes. If all four crossings are pushed, the whole intersection's blocked. Not only is that only used then for pedestrians and bikers, it allows the flow of traffic when there are no bikers there in the middle of the night. So it's innovative things the city needs to look at, instead of looking at things black and white. And I think you need more outside input from not, not from experts, but from residents who use these types of things, like myself. The trail's not heavily used, and I'm hoping they're not talking about tearing down the trees along the Nine Mile Creek Trail. Those trees are mature, they're healthy. There's no reason to take those down. I'm one who believes in belt tightening. Just because you have the money, there's no reason to go spend it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else here? Yes?
I'm Jeannie Kozar, and I'm at 7200 York. And I have to say, I've walked the promenade for 20 years, but I've lived down here for 10 years. And yes, the promenade's very special, as is Centennial Lakes. And it was, the whole meeting presentation was most interesting, because I think some of the graphics were more helpful than just seeing the plans. But I think there's work that needs to be done, because I agree with the first gentleman as far as the wind and the cold. And you have this big wall of buildings that all of a sudden is, should be gradually coming into the greenest area that we have on the promenade. And it's, it's a delightful thing, but now you have this big wall, which takes out the sunsets, takes out the lights. And I would like to see step down, maybe to five, four or five stories on the promenade. I know there's an issue of income and this sort of thing, but you need to also look at those who use it a lot. And some of you may not walk the promenade often, but we have residents who walk two and three times a day, and there are families, and it's busy. And I also have an issue with the dog park. I like dogs, but do you know what that's going to smell like in the summertime at 90-some degrees? I mean, that's just what they do. And that concentration and that location, I think, would be an abomination. And let's see, what else do I have? I think that's probably about it for the moment, but I'm sure you'll hear from me if I think of something else. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Yulia Kevarkova. I'm from the same crowd from 7220 York Avenue. So I'm one of the residents, owners of a condo directly across from the promenade, from the proposed development. And it's been really great to actually hear all of these comments and to see the visuals. So I do want to say, I appreciate like the, you know, the inevitable change in the development that comes with the neighborhood. I do want to live, and when I moved here several years ago, I did want to live in a vibrant neighborhood, but also kind of committed to having a vibrant neighborhood around me, but also having a home that I return to, to be in like a quiet park-like setting. And so what concerns me about this proposal is just the sheer size and density of it in what is a relatively small space for that area. And not just for Adina, but specifically for the Centennial Lakes area and, I guess, the adjacent promenade. And so I know there's been a lot of things mentioned about parking lot and, you know, the wind and the shadow and, you know, the garage, the green space. All of that ultimately boils down at how much you can pack and squeeze into that space. And, you know, between 600 residential units, I don't know how many thousands of people that will be, plus roughly, this is very rough math, but 70,000 or so square feet of office space, 17,000 square feet of retail, that's a lot of commotion. All of it being brought in essentially into what is currently a fairly tucked-away, peaceful park. And people use it all the time. It's a, it's a walkway that is, you know, has wildlife and flowers and people walking by without the streets from like France and York kind of jumping into that middle. And again, I like that if there is going to be development, that we have mixed use, like it's not just, you know, the Bower, that sort of towers over everyone in that neighborhood, just stands there and creates wind and shadow. But it's, I like that there's going to be a couple of restaurants here and there. And all of that sounds great, but if we could maybe just tame it a little bit and think of all of the existing residential areas surrounding it, the people that committed to those areas and to those buildings and communities, and how that's going to change essentially that entire, both the park setting, the promenade area, and essentially our backyard, because our property is literally like tens of feet away maybe from, from what is going to be built. So whether it's shrinking it in size or in height, or just in density in general, I'm not sure. I'll leave that up to you good folks, but I think that's one of the bigger concerns from everyone that lives and uses that area on a daily basis. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, do you have anybody on the line?
We do have two people on the line, but they have not indicated that they want to speak. So I just want to remind them, if they would like to speak, please press star 3 on your phone right now, and then I will unmute your line. Neither of them have indicated yet, so I think it's safe to proceed.
Okay, great, thank you. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close?
Take it. Well, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Public meeting is closed. Now it comes back to the commission. We could start on this side if you guys want to. Do you have comments?
Wow, okay, I'll start. You know, it's a large, complex project. So, I thought there were a lot of great questions and comments from the commission today and from residents who took the time to come and share their thoughts. But it's difficult to, at the end of the day, though, we need to come up with a binary, yes or no, do we support this, or do we not support this? Even though that sometimes the balance may be easy, sometimes the balance may be hard. I want to congratulate the applicant on response to prior interactions with planning commission, and I believe the city council also. This was before, your first time with the planning commission was before I was back on the planning commission. I think I saw it on video, but I think there's been some really good responsiveness to this. I see in the overall plan, a lot of value being delivered to the community. It's not perfect. I mean, I harp endlessly about parking, but I can see the overall value that's potentially delivered to the community here. I think it's interesting to think about our role as planning commissioners. We're responsible not only to, to be faithful to the comprehensive plan, to the extent that we can, and to the zoning ordinance to the extent that we can, and current residents who use these resources and who are adjacent to these, this potential project, but also to a certain extent to represent future residents and who might become parts of our community. And I think this project has a lot to offer all of the stakeholders, people who live here now, people who live in other parts of Adina that are not adjacent to this property, and people who will join us in the future. You know, I think there's been, been a lot of concern about height, and no discussion tonight, but some rumblings from the community about the R1 setback. For me, I take a lot of comfort in the fact that the density that's proposed here is within the range of what's prescribed in the comprehensive plan. So it's not, it's consistent with what we as a city have said we want to do in this part of our city. And to me, that goes a long way. As far as the height of the building, I think it's useful to note the height of the Bower and the height of the Weston, although, you know, that all by itself would not be decisive or persuasive to me. It's interesting to note, and a data point for me when I think about this project. And the R1 setback, I don't particularly view that as an obstacle, given the value that the project delivers. And I really, I have a hard time discerning what we're protecting R1 residents from, especially since there are human residents who live just southeast of this proposed project that don't seem to be protected from anything, because it's not R1, it's a condo. I'm having a hard time really valuing that in my, in my deliberation. So all in all, I'm inclined to support this. I applaud the work of the applicant and look forward to hearing what my fellow commissioners have to say.
I think the criteria for PUD is innovation, design, not achievable via traditional zoning. So that's basically what I think that you're looking for here and hoping to achieve with this large and important project. And I think in many ways, you have done that. But I also think there are a lot of unresolved issues. And this isn't as good as it can be. When a quote from the design guidelines is overarching objective to maximize pedestrian activity within the public realm as a connective tissue that gives a district its unique identity. And I don't feel that I can say that that is being achieved here with these, with these renderings. I believe in the density that we're trying to achieve. I believe in growth. I would, I think it would be great to have more people enjoying the wonderful park that's right here. But I also think there is a lack of detail on enhancing pedestrian experience in terms of the bike, in terms of this north-south street, which is ill-defined. I have a very great concern about... I have a very great concern about the shade and the wind, particularly the wind. And as had been mentioned before, if you walk by the Bower, all of a sudden the climate changes in terms of the wind and the temperature. And, and that's an issue. And I'd be concerned about the seven-story northeast and southeast buildings as well. I think the, the south view from Gallagher, I know you had talked about making it a green wall and that wasn't how the, the picture was. But it, to me, it looked imposing and severe. I guess that would be softened a little bit by the green wall. But I still think, I still think that's an issue for, because it's a high-traffic area. The traffic study, as I mentioned, as I alluded to before, I just think there are too many exceptions under the 2025 build scenario. Mick Johnson had put in his comments and he says the character and shape reduced to a bare minimum. And I'm wondering whether if we could have varied façades to make it look, you know, more village-like. And when I look at the pretty pictures of what the connector was going to look like, the east-west connector, I did think to myself, I don't think I'd go there. So I think, I'm not really quite sure how much it offers. And I think it is imperative that it offer something to the public. Possibly a playground, but I would, I would like to see another iteration of this project in order for me to support it. Thank you.
All right. Well, complex project, complex thoughts. I guess first of all, you know, thank residents for being here tonight and providing your input to us. It's, I always appreciate hearing firsthand, you know, either in person or if they're better together in Edina. So it's always nice to hear from, from the community, even big projects, big and small. And so obviously this one, as the site that's located as, how big it is, it's going to generate a lot of excitement and/or disappointment from the community. But it's important that we hear both sides of the coin. So, you know, we saw this project back months ago and had sketch plan review with the developer. And, you know, I thought that sketch plan review went pretty well. There was definitely a lot for, that we gave, that gave you guys to unpack. I think did a good job of taking a lot of that feedback and, you know, putting it in a positive direction, right? You made a lot of good improvements to this based off sketch plan feedback, right? So it's in terms of sustainable buildings policy, affordable housing, rooftop solar, reducing amount of office space, increasing retail and housing, reducing the above-ground garage in the northwest building. I think all those things are very positive. I think when we saw this at the sketch plan phase, I would have been a little bit more hesitant. I think we've made a good step in the right direction here. You know, to me, this is really what PUD zoning is for. You know, the staff highlighted that in their, in their recommendations. And we just had a project, you know, only a few weeks ago where I would, where I strongly disagreed that what PUD was for. But this type of complexity, this type of multi-use, affordable housing, everything that we're getting out of this, you know, I think PUD is very reasonable ask here. So in regards to the zoning type, I think that, that makes sense. You know, as Commissioner Elkier said, it's not a perfect project by any means. I, there's certainly things that I would say I would like to see improved. The architecture piece, you know, I, building materials and stuff. I, I look at Maison Green and like, you know, that building really got it right. There's maybe some of the, the cladding and stuff on the side of the buildings, I think could look a little bit more distinguished. I'm not asking Frank Gehry to, to design this by any means. But something, you know, that's prominent, right? And that really stands out in the Southdale district, I think, is what we would hope for ultimately. So maybe there's improvement that could be made there. When I think about the connection to the promenade and the southeast and northeast buildings, you know, the shade, wind, those are a bit concerning. You know, I think of kind of how, right, so I used to live in uptown and would be bike on the greenway and run on the greenway very frequently. And those buildings would have a lot of more open space directed towards the greenway. These are a bit closed, so I, I would like it, it would be awesome if those two corners on the southeast and northeast residential buildings were a bit more open, right? So that you almost like had to step just those corners down. So it kind of like opened up a little bit more. If that can still be done, I don't know. I don't, you know, again, I know we're dealing with financing and affordable housing and stuff like that. But I think that could at least make the space look a little bit more open and not be so closed off to the promenade. Height, you know, I know it's talked a lot about. Thankfully, it's not 18 stories. I, I'm always in favor of like, if we don't have to build it as high, then let's not, right? But this is a part of the town where height, you know, at least makes a little bit more sense. We're not putting an 11-story building, you know, over by Braemar Golf Course. So I know, again, there's a push-pull here. So I'm okay with it. I know I would, I probably was one of the people in the sketch plan that actually, you know, pushed back and said, I would prefer less height. I know some said more, right? I think it just feels a little bit more like amicable to, to the pedestrian experience if there, the buildings are a little shorter. And then we talk about shade and wind in that regard too. Okay, other things, you know, I wish we at least had some interaction. This is more on the city piece, but we talked about the bridge during the sketch plan. And obviously, we don't have any proposal for that yet. I know there's some pushback in terms of, we have to study where that makes sense. I, I'm glad that we're at least a lot accommodating that potentially in the future here. You know, as somebody that regularly traverses through the city on foot, I run a lot. Basically, France is my boundary. There's no really good way for me to get across. I just don't prefer not to, right? So if we can build a bridge, whether it's in this site or somewhere else, it makes sense. But it would be nice if I, if we would have had something that we could have seen those, those two concepts working together. And then, of course, ultimately, how one resident asked about how it conformed to ADA requirements and whatnot. So yeah, I mean, you know, ultimately, I'll, I'll go back to the PUD zoning ask and what we're looking at here. We've basically fulfilled, in my mind, most of the requirements that we ask of PUD zoning and what we give back to the community. I'll return to a commissioner, what you know, said on, you know, that PUD is supposed to be innovation, design, not achievable by traditional zoning. And I think that's what we've accomplished here. And for us to say that we didn't would, would be a bit of a contrast in my mind, because this, the same commission only a few weeks ago justified and approved PUD zoning for a simple townhome complex that had none of these design elements, none of this complexity, none of this affordable element to it, right? So this makes sense from PUD. So I would support it. Again, it's not perfect, but I think we're just a step in the right direction.
Okay. So I've been on the fence about this one a little bit. And this, so I started writing down as I went through the things that I liked. That I like that there's affordable housing in this project. There's 58 on the way to 1800 that we need. And we're in 2024. We're nearly halfway through 2024. So we have five and a half years to find 18, 1700 affordable housing units. 1500, I think we're in three, 300 so far. Density, this is, the density is lower than what's allowed or what we've done for the Civic Activity Center. So I think up to 1100 units. So we're good on the density. I appreciate that there's office space. I appreciate that there's at least one, two, possibly more restaurants. I appreciate that there's public parking. I appreciate that there is no, well, there's minimal surface parking. I mean, it's 1%. I like that it's sustainable. It is on the rapid transit system. I would really love to get that rapid transit system. I am a big fan of the number six bus. And I think everybody should ride it a few times in their life because it's very easy to get down to the U. The park dedication fees of 2.8, I think the park has about 15 million in earmarked monies or monies that they feel like they need. I like the owner occupied portion of this rather than just rentals. I appreciate that part of it as well. I like the program green. I like the tripartite, I like the way it's laid out with the base in the middle and the cap. It's always, I mean, for 2,000 years, it's been a beautiful way to do a building. So I appreciate that. I do really appreciate that this is broken up into four segments. This is the first time we've been trying to do this for a long time with Greater Southdale area. And we get to, and then finally, we have a project that does this. So, and I like the materials on the building. I especially like what's been proposed for the parking structures. I think that the wavy metal is fantastic. So I'm okay with relaxing some of the material standards for this. I'm okay with the R1 setback because the 130 difference is pretty much the size of one lot. I'm okay with the setback asks on this. I am still, you know, from what I understand, the way Edina does TIF is, is to invest in the pub, things that the public can use and for the public benefit. And whatever taxes that schools are getting, the schools continue to get until the TIF runs out. And then the school is aware of the additional taxes that they will get from this much larger building. So in the future, they will have good money. And so my concern is still that your promenade, that east-west street, having a lot of residential on it. I want that street to be a little bit more public. And, you know, I said, I mean, if, if it's public parking, restaurants, office, turning that restaurant, allowing people to have kind of work-live units on the first floor, anything that kind of makes that more active. The lobbies do make it more active, so I appreciate that. And so, and that's where and we don't do the TIF, the city council does the TIF. But I want to make sure that that east-west street really feels comfortable for anybody who's like, oh, that they don't walk in there and say, this is a residential street, somebody else's project. I can't go, I can't go walk in here. I want people to feel really comfortable, know that they have a place, that they have a dentist office or they have someplace that they can park their car and they walk through, and it's for them as well. So, oh, and the wind, it's the Venturi effect. A bunch of wind, the wind, it's the Venturi effect. That's the principle. Every architect knows that. You put two buildings together, a bunch of wind that's going through, it has to go faster in between them. The trees are very important and will help with that wind effect. So invest in the trees in the east-west corridor, that would help. But I think this is, I think I'm, I think I'm going to support this project. I, I am, I gotta say, more excited about the buildings on France Avenue than the residential ones, because this is a prominent spot. But I think I'm going to end up on the supporting side on this one. Thank you.
Venturi effect.
Venturi.
How does that work at the Bower, if that's what's happening? Because it's a single building.
It's right along the edge of the Bower, the wind speeds up. Every wind that would have gone through.
It doesn't move fast around Galleria or my house or like, is it, so is it related to the height at the ratio? I'll go look it up. I'm very curious about this because my grandmother lives at the Bower and I just always assumed it was a windy day when I got there, but it's always windy. So I'm, I'm very curious. I guess if we, before us today, is deciding whether or not approving the use as the PUD, how much, in that pyramid of discretion, how much further conversation will there be about these particular buildings since?
You could put conditions on that you would, could recommend to the city council? That's certainly been done before. Remove a story, step it in, those types of things?
I appreciate how complex this project is and to actually get something done on this site with this complexity, with all of the layers of code and the comp plan and, and, and everything to make it all work. And I think you guys have done a really good job. There are a couple of things you want to tweak. And I think we've talked about those a lot here. And I, I don't know what sort of recommendations you would make, but I would just, I guess, strongly encourage the developer to really, as you're fine-tuning things, take those in the heart. You know, I don't want to kick a dead horse. We've talked about parking, we've talked about all the things. I, I really do commend you guys because this is not easy to put together. And we do have other sites in the city where a large mixed-use development conditions changed and we can't get it done, right? Can't put all the financing together, can't get the construction costs in the right place, can't make all the partners show up at the right time. So I really do appreciate that. I think this is a great value add to the city. And yeah, I, I appreciate the consideration. And you can tell just by the fly-through that you guys have really thought about some of the details. Maybe not every detail that I would like is perfect, but I just, the level of work you guys have put into it is really evident. So thank you for that.
Okay, thank you, everyone. So my comments are, without repeating too much, what are the people have said? There are few places in the city where we can really build density. And certainly between France Avenue and York and 62 and 494 is the primary place we can do that. So I think this is kind of the ideal place for density and this is pretty much where it belongs. And like others, I have qualms about some things, but overall, I think it's, it's, it's well-designed. We broke up the street pattern, which is what we're trying to do for the Southdale area, an extension of the promenade. I have concerns about a tunnel or a bridge, but that's neither here nor there. I'm a little concerned if, if more people bike along the street crossing along France, that they're going to see more of a wall there and that you'll have more people going there than you will through the, through the promenade. But anyway, I like how the building is stepped back. It seems to follow a lot of the Southdale guidelines. I like how there's a variety of housing and that you have, you know, like townhomes that face, much like the Bower does, that face the promenade. So I think that makes it more interesting than just having an apartment wall, which is kind of cold and no one's ever outside. So I think that was, that was really good. I like how on, I realize that nowadays you can't have retail everywhere. It's not, retail isn't what it used to be. But I like how on the edges and the corners is where the retail is concentrated, which makes a lot of sense, retail and restaurants. I like that the promenade is elevated going across the central street. I think that, that's very important. That will slow cars down there, which is a big deal. My real concern is, is the fact that it's kind of overparked and that some of these overparked areas result in blank walls. And that becomes, even if it's not windy, it becomes a very boring place to walk past. It's like walking past a big box store. And art helps, but it's, you know, it, it doesn't do a lot. And same thing with the green wall, it helps, but it's, it's not the same thing as having a, you know, a shop or a, but then, you know, you guys do make the lobbies, you know, go out onto the, the green out onto the the greenway and stuff. So I think you guys have tweaked a lot here, and I feel like it's a good faith effort. And, you know, it's a mixture of uses, and it just kind of follows the pattern, I think, that we're looking for, for the city. So I'm, I'm in favor of this project. So does anyone want to make a motion? Yeah, any other comments? No.
Paul, I'll ask, is there any conditions or anything, too? I don't think there was anybody that I knew wanted any conditions to add to this either for a motion. Okay.
No, I mean, someone can make a motion for whatever reason, and then we can discuss it, and people can add, or ask to add conditions. You know, it, we'll iterate, sure.
Sure. All right, well, I'll start, and I'll motion to recommend to the city council approve the requests, subject to the findings and conditions outlined in the staff memo. So approve the PUD zoning for this development.
Second. What? Oh, we have to have discussion first?
First, I think, okay, second first, okay, thank you. No, second first. Okay, now, any comments or changes or additions or conditions? Nothing?
I don't want to add any conditions. We've looked at this project.
What's that?
We've looked at this project several times, and they have really put a lot of work into it, and they've talked to the city council, and so I, they know they're.
Okay, well, then, let's take a vote.
Okay.
So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those not in favor, say nay.
Nay.
The one nay. So it's approved? It's approved, great. Thank you very much.
So go to city council on June 4th.
Yeah, that was a difficult discussion, but I'm glad we had a really good discussion, I think, here tonight. All right, next is chair member comments. Go.
Chair, members of the planning commission, I normally don't follow up with a thank you, but it's a big enough project, complex enough project. There's been a lot of feedback, and it's been a long process. I just want to, like, for the record, say we respect everything you're wrestling with, the things we're wrestling with. I appreciate the term used in good faith. We heard comments tonight. I hope you saw that through the process in good faith, we were trying to absorb those comments and adapt and change them. Can't guarantee we can react to every one of those comments we heard tonight, but we're going to try to, and we have a lot of similar feelings. So I'm excited to continue to work with the city on this, and hopefully, we can continue to refine and do better. But just want to say we respect all the input, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. If we could take the conversations outside, please? If we can, if we, if we could take the conversations outside, please, is this on? Excuse me, excuse me. Thank you. And it's a glass wall, so please stay far away from the door, thank you. It's more than 75% transparent. Okay. On that note, the next thing is chair member comments. Any member comments? No?
Man, I just say I need to spend more time trying to understand TIF financing, to be honest. I know that, you know, I've asked about it, and I feel, every time I feel like I understand it, then somebody throws a new wrinkle at me, and I'm like, what? What are you talking about? I know we don't deliberate it on this council, but there's certainly, I know, you know, a lot of discussion in the community about its use right now and everything, and so I would say I'm going.
Happy to chat with you anytime.
Yeah.
Because there is a lot of misconceptions, like people talk about paying, using tax dollars. I don't know that that's the appropriate way to frame it.
True.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
And Bill Nguyen Dorf was very gracious, and sat with me for two hours to talk about TIF financing. He'll do that for anyone.
Okay, yeah, it's, like I said, it's just, it's complex, and so I knew, I brought it up, but it's definitely something that, I know it's on the community's mind a lot, so.
So no other comments? I guess the only thing I'd add is that, I mean, I'm one-hit wonder, because Jimmy's coming back next time, next week, but, or next Monday, but, but.
He's gonna take this opportunity while he has it.
Yeah. I'm gonna, no. Yeah, well, I just want to say that, you know, it, I think it's, it's fine for us to mention things like TIF or whatever and have a comment about it, but I, I think it's a bad idea, because it's not something under our domain. There's lots of things that aren't under our domain, and so like, you know, things about the building or the building code, that's not, and it's not our thing. We're looking at zoning and land use and, and city policies. So the city has climate action, it has, you know, equity, a lot of policies, and those, how they relate to land use and zoning is important. But I, I think we need to pull back on any kind of, you know, if you get into too much detail, like, we're not supposed to consider whether it's rental or paid, right? We have no say over that. We have no say about the number of two-bedroom or three-bedroom apartments, you know? There's a lot of things we just don't have say over that isn't relevant to our deliberation here. So I think it behooves us to not end a single public hearing at 10:30. You know, if we can, if we can rein in some of that stuff and concentrate on the things that are relevant to land use and, and zoning. So anyway, that's it. So staff comments?
Yeah, just a couple of quick updates from the last council meeting. They took action on the Hankerson Townhome Project. The council denied that on a unanimous, unanimous vote, it was 5-0, and the dental office was approved. And that's it. Oh, the, the 6,600 through 6,800? Yeah, they are not proceeding, so that one never went to the city council. Public hearing was scheduled, but they delayed a couple of times, and they've basically told staff that they will not be proceeding with that project. They may be back later this year, maybe early next year with another proposal, but no action taken, application withdrawn, essentially.
Okay, great. Do we have a question here?
Oh, yeah, it's about the Cahill development thing. So is it just out of the standstill for now, or like, what do we foresee for that? And how do we, like, if it is in the standstill, how do we get out of it? And are, is like, what are we prepared from the developers for that?
Yeah, so the Cahill study was denied by the city council, but they are interested in picking it back up, given the current work plan of the planning commission, which is pretty robust. We got a lot of things we're working on. I would anticipate that we, that'll be on the work plan or proposed possibly for next year to revisit the whole district.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.